Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First, a couple of comments. Item number one, 95 Club Road, has been postponed. Number 11, 301 Davis Evanso, has been postponed. And item number 12, 301 Davis Evanso, again, has been postponed. We're now on number two, 70 Sinaway Road, final subdivision application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission for the applicant Frank Napolitano. This application, as you know, was left open from the last meeting, which time you had asked for some clarification as to the reason the slot line revision was sought. In addition, there was a question as to whether or not the sewer permit—
Excuse me a second.
Yes?
Ms. Raymer called my attention. She's seated on item number two. And she's also seated on item number three in the public hearing.
For Mr. Maitland.
And number four.
And number four.
And number four.
Going home.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we've returned to answer questions, one with regard to the sewer permit that had elapsed and whether or not that had been renewed, and then also to answer questions with regard to the genesis of this application and why we're here before you. The sewer permit has been renewed. I don't know if you've had confirmation. I understand they have. Very good, okay. That was renewed the day after the hearing, so it's good. There's some closeout items that need to be handled. And the other matter was the reason for this application. And basically what had happened was, what was proposed was a house on the rear lot here, 70A Sinaway, in which the foyer into the front, the front entrance foyer was located two steps lower than the first floor elevation. During construction, it was a field decision to raise the foyer to the height of the first floor to give more headroom in the basement. In doing that, the entrance to the first floor, which was already up three steps, needed to be raised. In doing that, there was additional steps. There were narrow steps. It was sought to make a landing and a portico with additional steps that would enter into the house, which resulted in a nonconformity into the side yard of 2.6 feet. To remedy this, before seeking a C of O, the applicants, and they're here this evening, Mr. Frank Santana, his wife Pina, and Michael Santana, both property owners, sought to get ahead of the problem and seek, between them, a reconfiguration of lot lines that would result in no diminution in lot size and equal area exchange and the resulting layout which would cure the zoning conformity. In my material that I had submitted to you, I showed you two examples of when, two times in which the Commission prior has used the lot line revision to cure zoning nonconformity. It's well within the ambit of your authority. In this case, we would say it's compelled by the facts. You're not creating a subdivision or a resubdivision, and we respectfully ask for your approval this evening.
Okay. Comments? Comments, anybody? Any comments from the public? Well, who would like to make a motion?
There's a person who'd like to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Pardon me?
This is the neighbor.
The neighbor would like to speak.
Oh, please, sorry, ma'am. Why don't you come on up and introduce yourself first?
Hi, I'm Tracy Brown, the neighbor at 66 right across from them. And just that, I just wanted to bring in some construction photos which show that they had a pediment there that was back and was not at all projecting. And then they built, that was in May 5th and the 15th, and then they subsequently finished the terrace out, those projected feet beyond. And then later on, they came back and opened up the pediment again and decided to put the whole pediment out at the edge of their newer terrace. So I don't know about the sequence of the elevations, but it's just how it worked in construction over two months.
Thank you.
That's the first one where, you know, it's back and they're building the terrace, I mean, the landing, and then this is where they finished the landing, and then this is where they went ahead and rebuilt it and built out to the edge of beyond where they're—
Sit down and then I'll come back. Sorry.
We have no other comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll take a look at this and—
I think they show the site conditions as they developed, and I saw the photos overlooking her shoulder.
I just want everybody to take a look at it, see if they have any comments. I'm gonna bis that down.
Mr. Chair, while people are looking at the photographs, I'd just like to clarify that since Mr. Levy's not here at the moment, Mr. McRae would also be seated on this application since Mrs. Raymer is seated for Mr. Maitland. So it will be McRae, Raymer, Heller, Albin, and Fox will be the seated members.
Yes, Mr. McRae knows that.
As you know, there's no change in the lot line that is closest to—
All right. Anybody in the Commission have anything to say? Any comments? Okay. Will someone make a motion, please? Do you want to make a motion?
Oh, I forgot.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I forgot. I'd like to make a motion to, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion that the Commission finds that this is neither a subdivision or a resubdivision.
Okay. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commission.
We're now in the public hearing, ma'am.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we should, thank you.
Minutes?
Four, wait two minutes.
I'd like to move approval of the, I'd like to move approval of the October 20th minutes.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Also, while we're at it, why don't we move approval of the budget proposed by Mrs. DeLuca? Her memo that she sent to us on November 5th, the budget proposed for the years 2016-17.
Did you want the budget approved tonight?
Yes, please.
Okay, good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then, are we in a position to approve our schedule for next year or not?
That's a bit more complicated.
Do you want to wait till the next meeting? Why don't we talk about it? We've got a little time.
So in your packages, there is the draft schedule for 2016. There's one meeting that is scheduled right now in January, for January 12th, I believe it is, and we discussed the idea yesterday of adding a second January meeting. So we have tentatively booked the 21st and the 26th, which would be that third, the third week in January. Keep in mind that we do have a meeting on February 2nd, so that'll be back-to-back meetings. To avoid that problem, if you wanted to, we could have a meeting on December 22nd, which I understand is wildly unpopular.
Wildly.
The other possibility would be we could do the 15th.
Right, so the only dates that are not available in January, the 5th, the 7th, and the 19th, so—
What about December 15th?
That, I don't know—
Can everybody just give me a dirty look?
Indeed.
Okay.
Oh, December 15th? Oh, that, no, I don't know about that, yeah.
Does anybody have a problem with December?
So the 21st is a Thursday and the 26th is a Tuesday.
Of January.
Of January. So we would have the 12th—
The 12th and the 26th.
And the 26th would be the Thursday. Okay, good.
12th and 26th. Okay.
I would move the approval of the schedule as amended to include a meeting January 26th.
Second? Somebody?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Folks, one of the Commissioners will be late, and we're going to hold off on 599 West Putnam for a little bit, awaiting his arrival. If in a reasonable period of time he's not yet here, we'll move to it. So we're going to skip that for a period of time and go to Marlin Lot, Zero Marlin Road, final site plan and special permit. Is that you?
It will be.
Your timing is exquisite.
Mr. Chairman, I'm now on the record. I'm now on the record.
Okay.
I believe he normally starts off by saying, "Good evening, Mr. Chairman." For the record, John Hegney. My father does wish he could be here. Unfortunately, he is sometimes. He's with the Grant Library this evening for their status update meeting for the local branches. We received the staff report following the revisions we made, and we have no issues with Ms. Tominski's findings, and we would ask for your approval.
That's it?
We can get further into it. I mean, we responded to your comments by bringing in a revised planting plan, which I believe Mr. Liebman is bringing up right now.
There were only, there were just a couple of open staff comments. One was that you provide a maintenance plan for the meadow, and then also that you provide the method of tree protection during the construction and process. Is there, does anybody else have any comments?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Larry Liebman from SC Minor. As far as the maintenance plan for the meadow, the Wetlands Agency, part of their permit is to keep the meadow intact with demarcation features, and if there's any other language, we'll be happy to craft it as far as—
Maintenance plan.
Okay, that's fine. I can, you know, it shall be mowed twice a year, which is what I give to Wetlands. That's fine. I can do that. And as far as tree protection, that's part of the erosion control plan, and we will, if there's, for the final set of plans, if there's additional measures that need to be beefed up, it'll be on those plans.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just to clarify, the planning plan, you're not intending to remove any trees in the clouded areas, even though your arborist said they're not worth saving? I'm just trying to understand what you're going to do.
I would like to infer that with the landscape architect, but I believe that that is the case. We're going to leave them, even though the arborist says that they're not worth saving.
Okay. Any other comments? Any comments from the public? Okay, we'll close.
Thank you.
Item number five is 151 Greenwich Evanso, final site plan and special permit.
Mr. Seale's looking for Mr. Hasland, I believe, he is the applicant.
What's that?
I said, "Mr. Seale's looking for Mr. Hasland, who I believe is going to speak on that item," unless Mr. Hegney's going to do it.
Mr. Hasland is at that same meeting. Everyone is volunteering their time for the library this evening. I know that—
Are they planning to come over at some point when it's over?
They were hoping to leave that meeting at 7:30 this evening.
I see, okay.
I apologize.
They were hoping to be back at 7:30?
They were hoping to leave the library at 7:30. The meeting ran from 6:30 to 7:30.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. Do we have anything on this?
On 151, I think we gotta wait.
If we have something else, skip it. Okay?
Is Mr. Tessie at that meeting also, Mr. Hegney?
Okay. I think we'll skip it.
Maybe he has an interest in citizens, but—
That's okay. I think, I think, guys, how do you feel? I think we have to go back and—
No, let's go to six.
Let's go to six.
You want to go to six? You prefer that? Fine.
We only have four people because Nick is recused.
You're right, and we have a tough problem.
Also, not recused, but I'm not putting on that one.
Yeah, okay.
That's four people.
Okay. Can we go to 330 Railroad Evanso?
Yep, they're walking in.
330 Railroad Evanso?
He can't believe his ears.
I think we're not right, no.
Mr. Tessie?
We're moving—
We're gonna do 330 Railroad?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna do 330 Railroad right now.
Mr. Tessie, what do you have tonight?
330 Railroad.
330 Railroad.
You can take your coat off.
Take your coat off and stay a while.
You don't want that. Our engineer isn't here, but—
Well, you can—
Thank you, Mr. Heller, members of the Commission.
Good evening.
John Tessie representing the applicant. There are actually two applicants, 330 Railroad Avenue LLC, which is the contract purchaser of the property at 330 Railroad Avenue from EverSource Energy CL&amp;P.
Excuse me, Mr. Tessie, just one moment. This is just a— Mr. McRae is seated on this for you.
Thank you.
Just so we need a fifth person either. So I don't know what the protocol is on that. Katie?
I can't— I'm sorry. Mrs. Raymer said that because Mr. Levy isn't here yet, we have to figure out who's seated.
Right, and—
Mr. McRae is definitely seated.
Right, so that would mean—
I would have to be seated together with Mr. McRae to make up five, I think.
If you'd like to do it that way, you certainly could.
Then I will seat, sit. And Mr. McRae will also sit, okay? But thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, so it's McRae, Maitland—
But he was at the meeting.
Oh, you, Mr. Heller, sorry, Mr. Tessie, you were at the meeting.
He was at the last meeting.
I've read it.
Because he came to the last meet—
And I'll make that statement.
Now, hold on a second, let me double check.
I'll make the statement. Seated on this application—
He showed up.
—will be Mr. McRae, myself, Mr. Maitland, Ms. Albin, and Mr. Fox. And I missed the first presentation, but I've read up on it.
And he was seated, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We were before you at your October 6th meeting last month, and during that hearing, we made a full presentation of the application—
You took it a little louder.
We made a full presentation of the application, we, meaning myself, our engineer, Mr. Spina, who's not here yet, and also Mr. Greenoff. We reviewed the site plan, as you all know, and we reviewed the architectural plans, both in terms of the floor plans and the elevations. There were a, I'll call it a relatively few number of items that the Commission wished that we would address prior to coming back to the Commission in continuation of that application. In the staff report prepared by Mr. Seal, he does note with respect to this updated application on the second page, the items that we were looking to address during this interim period. And to my knowledge, we've essentially addressed all items, hopefully to the satisfaction of this Commission.
Did you get a comment from the CEO on the yards?
Yes. I forwarded the email last month. I happen to have a copy of it.
Okay. Somehow it didn't make it into our packet.
It was done by email, and I actually asked, went in to see Jody and said, "Well, can you just confirm it in writing?" Sign it. Here is John Hancock on it, on the yet, the emails. Basically, what he, well, we don't have his—
Let's pass it down to staff and see if they're happy.
All right, we need a site plan. Essentially, it's what I'd said right along, what this would have to be, because it reduces the number of nonconformities, which is what you look for when you have to have an interpretation. And basically, he and I agreed that this is actually a through lot running from Prospect Street to Field Point Road. Therefore, we have a street side yard, although everybody considers it the front yard, it's a street side yard on Railroad, meeting a 10-foot setback. The front is, and they're both considered, since it's a through lot, two fronts. Therefore, we have a legally nonconforming front yard in terms of the setback with regard to Field Point Road. We have a regular side yard to the south. We have a compliant front yard on Prospect, and we have a very tiny at this corner here, intrusion, I think it's eight feet plus, into the setback, 10-foot setback on Railroad Avenue. Any other way creates more, more nonconformities.
No, no, but the last time you were here, there were two different—
There were two different plans, one done by one engineer, one by the other. He wanted us to clarify it. I thought I'd forward the email if I, for Jody, if I didn't. I know I didn't submit the signature, but I thought I submitted the—
Staff is reviewing your submission now.
Okay, that's fine, okay. Thank you. I did it, I guess, so quickly that it slipped through the cracks. We've addressed that one. There was a comment made in the staff report with respect to the, on issues and recommendations, and one had to do number two, let's see, yeah, number one and number two. One had to do with the solar array not having been shown to the ARC as of yet. That's solar array on the roof, obviously, and that's true, Mr. Greenoff pointed it out, it just did not, because of the timing, the ARC did not see it. We're required to go back to ARC anyway for final approval of the construction drawings, so we would simply bring that, not simply, but we'd like to make that a condition, that we bring the solar array back when we go back to ARC for final sign-off on the plans, if that's acceptable. Regarding lighting, it appears there are some issues with the lighting plan that was submitted. We've internally discussed it, and we're happy with the suggestion of Mr. Seal that the lumens plan be adjusted, obviously in a satisfactory manner, prior to the zoning permit sign-off, which would be a necessity anyway, because that's not a discretionary issue. Either you comply with the requirements of the Building Zone Regulations on Lighting or you don't. So we will bring it into compliance. We have no choice. There were comments, because they're bold, I'm going with the bold comments here, on page 172, number 11, regarding the DPW request concerning entrance and exit of the north parking lot, which is the Railroad Avenue portion of the parking plan for the property. That's been reviewed, and there are no further DPW comments on that subject—
Yes, but we have—
—to our knowledge.
Well, we have a problem with this because we got something yesterday or Friday from DPW.
Yes, we're going to address that next.
Okay.
DPW pointed out that, in that memo, that the, basically Melissa Evans, the traffic person—
Person, yes.
—had an issue with our internal circulation with regard to the rear, so the south parking lot, if you will.
Did you show us what the—
And although it's in technical full compliance with our regulations in terms of parking stall size, aisle widths, et cetera, she felt that there was potential for some conflict here. Now, I think it's important to bear in mind, this is not a retail center, doctor's offices, et cetera. This is a general office building, so we're really dealing with non-transient spaces. So you're not going to get—
I think your explanation is with her because she's quite—
Now, that's fine, I'm just getting to the point. What we asked Mr. Spina to do, killing time, hopefully he gets here, what we asked Mr. Spina to do is to address the issue directly with Melissa, and they sat down, or they were over the phone? Sat down, right. They sat down earlier today and went over it, and over her issues and her concerns. We had one concern in that at first, when they were discussing the issue, we may lose a couple of parking spaces. And since we're legally nonconforming already, we didn't want to lose any, but our creative, Mr. Spina, was able to work the plan out as she wanted, which was basically to make this driveway, which is along the eastern portion of the property, that now runs, that's clockwise, one way, to reverse it to make it run instead of one way, north to south, south to north. And in doing that, and in reconfiguring, what he had to reconfigure to make it work, he came up with a revised plan that he has on a board in his car on his way here, that in actuality results in no diminution of the number of parking spaces. I have an 11-by-17 plan here, I'm just—
You don't have one of those fancy emails that somebody has signed saying it's okay, do you?
No, no, because this is literally hot off the presses.
Doesn't even have to be a fancy one, does it? Sorry, I was, it is on—
Here it is, here, yeah. I didn't bring a bunch of copies because I thought it was coming. But basically, it's getting hard for you to see, but let me just—
Why don't you just—
I won't speak.
Yeah, I'll pass it down, you can compare the two. But basically, this is, this here is the hot off the presses, let me just see here.
Is that how it's identified?
Plan here, right, let me check with Mr. Greenoff. Well, he's not dated today, so I give him a few. It's 11:10, that's today, 11:10. Wow, I was ahead of myself. It is 11:10. Okay, this is the plan that he's come up with, which basically, I guess you can pass it along, this is the existing plan. But what he did is changed the circular, circul—
Circulation.
Thank you. Circulation around, you know, the manner that Melissa wanted, which was to reverse the north-south, to the south-north, essentially. We've actually addressed it, it being the issue. We would, in that regard, request—
Can you tell me why, I just glanced at it quickly—
Yeah.
But can you tell me why there's still two-way traffic between, at the south end of the building, which goes immediately then into one-way traffic headed south? There's two arrows shown, showing two-way traffic there, and it doesn't seem to make any sense.
Yeah, they're, the only two-way traffic you need, you're talking about right here—
Yeah.
—which is just south of the building, is to get into the parking garage.
Well, that may be good for those people who know that, but how do other people know it? It doesn't seem to, I mean, where are you going to put the sign?
Well, I think, we have to put, we'll have to put a sign here noting this, well, this is now going this way. So when you're coming in, there'll be—
Why wouldn't you make that, just simply, why wouldn't you make that one way? If that's the case, and you just come in and go counter— If that's the case, and you just come in and go counterclockwise?
Well, we could make it, you'll see in the revision. First of all, she wants you to come in this, this way.
I understand.
South to north.
That's.
So, when you come out, you're saying make this one way here?
If you're permitting two-way traffic there, yes. Why don't you just continue that counterclockwise movement? Counterclockwise, yeah, and go one way out.
Well, counterclockwise is here.
No.
No, you're going clockwise.
Counterclockwise is coming in here.
Correct.
Right, so you're coming in and going, yeah, I'm agreeing with you. I'm saying, I don't think that's an issue.
Well, there's no reason for two-way traffic, and the idea of trying to cut through there to get to the garage is just, it's a conflict.
Well, the only, I wish Stephen were here, he can talk, talk about that, but the point is you'll come in here, go around, and come up this way, as opposed to coming in here. That's what you're saying.
Yes.
Right.
If you've changed it from a clockwise movement to a counterclockwise movement, continue it, because.
I understand, you're saying that's a conflict there, and I think that remains, but he discussed that with her, but do we really have a, an issue? Do you see what he's saying? Yeah. It's fine.
So, there's no problem making that one way, counterclockwise?
Yeah, so you come in this way, when you come out, you have to go right, or you go, you go, you go.
You go right to the tree, and then you go right, or you go right or left.
Then you can even go, then you can either go out.
That way, or go out.
This way onto Prospect, or this way onto Railroad.
Okay, so, so.
Right.
What we're doing is saying that this is now just going to be one way, counterclockwise. Mr. Tessie?
He's agreeing with you.
Your two arrows here. We're getting rid of this one.
That's the new one, that's the new one.
Okay, is that?
That's, that's fine. It's.
Okay.
It's fine with the client.
Okay.
And, you know, people just have to make a bigger loop, that's all.
All right.
But I'm not going to be making a loop myself.
I don't think it's a big issue. More of a problem with conflicts than.
Okay.
I don't know if we discussed this before, but on the number, since you are only with 57 spaces, that section 6-100 comes into play at that point, so that.
100.1 you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we talked about it last time, and I agree with that, it does.
Okay, so then that would be in.
That'll, that'll limit the number of employees, 120% times the 50. Yeah, we, we understand.
We had some discussion yesterday, and I don't know, Nancy may want to, she'll speak with more authority on this than I will, but I must admit, I still don't understand, let me ask it a different way. Can you explain why 617.2B does not apply to this project? From your memory?
Why, why it doesn't apply to this project?
Yeah.
Well.
Because it very clearly says that when you subdivide into two or more lots, you have to go through the subdivision process, and that.
You, you, I specifically, okay, let's, you're right, let's just wind things back.
Yeah.
I read A and B, and I read A and B together. Okay, they're not separate, they're meant to be read A and B originally, it, okay, originally what happened is, B read a division into three or more parcels, until in 2013, you changed the subdivision regulations, and you made it, and you reduced it down to two. The concept of A doesn't go away. The concept of A was to allow for this commission to have the latitude to approve a, a division of property, a title division of property, into literally as many separate parcels as you propose, but they'll be considered one zoning lot. That is the concept of A. That goes back.
First, sir, the concept is two. The section says two.
No, I'm just telling you the concept.
It's not as many as you want, it's two.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, I'm telling you what the concept was. The con, that's why A and B read together, it says two. However, I always read and always understood that, when you read B, when you read B into it, B made no sense unless it was integrated into A.
The clear, the intent of A is even, goes to the specificity of saying that the developer may wish to create separate condominium, then a division of the approved tract into two parcels, or lots.
Yeah, I, I can speak to that.
There's that.
Right, I can speak to that.
And then there's B, which talks about these same two.
Right. What, what happened in, well, again, well, as far as the issue of condominium, this was generated, this particular regulation, in conjunction with, my best memory is back in the 70s, it was the Palmer Point condominium.
Mr. Tessie?
Yes.
The date is 1992.
Well, maybe it was 92. Whenever it was, it had, it had to do with, whenever Palmer Point was approved, that's where it came from, went through this. And the developer at the time, Arthur Collins, wanted to have a condominium, actually only on one of the two parcels. Had nothing to do with a condominium overlay on both parcels. Just pointing out, I think it was poor verbiage here, it's basically two parcels, one of which could be a condominium. As Katie pointed out, as our town planner, Katie DeLuca, pointed out last meeting, this, this was, this section has been utilized a number of times, and I gave you, I gave you one of the decisions, having to do with the parcel on which Boxcar Cantina is, was the old Conti Nursery property. And, and there had nothing to do with condominiums, you approved it, it was two separate parcels. There's a history here of how you construed this regulation. Do I think it's the greatest, I think, do I think it's the most artful document or section ever drafted? No.
The problem that we're, that, that is being discussed.
Yeah.
B is quite specific, and as Nancy pointed out, it is the more current. Is that just poorly drafted? I mean, is that, why do we, okay.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Excuse me. As Mr. Tessie pointed out, excuse me, the, I know, I'm losing my voice as the night goes on. The, the original regulation had read a division into three or more parcels, because that was the definition of subdivision. And then in, the, the language was changed to read into two or more parcels, because it was discovered that there was a mistake. So, when we talk about subdivision, this is what we talked about a little bit last time, when we talk about subdivision, it's a division of a parcel of land for the purpose of dividing those into two buildable lots. When the commission grants a subdivision, what they're in effect doing is stating that there are two buildable lots, and they can be in common ownership, or they can be sold off, what have you. The key thing is that there are two separate zoning lots. As opposed to in section A, where, Mr. Maitland, the language you read, it's a division of the approved tract into two parcels of, into two parcels or lots for the purpose of sale or building development. Then at the end of A, it says, "For the purpose of compliance with these regulations, such a divided tract development should be considered a single lot." And that sentence is the difference between A and B, because A is talking about a division for ownership purposes of a single zoning lot, versus B, which is talking about dividing a single lot into two, two separate distinct zoning lots. So, it's, A is talking about division for ownership purposes, B is talking about division of, of land, and, and A is, you know, so A is just one zoning lot. And as Mr. Tessie said, this has been used several times previously throughout the years, where, where in effect, you have one zoning lot that is controlled by two entities. And that's the purpose of the regulation.
I just think, thank you, Katie, and that's what.
I wouldn't take A and B together. I think, the only place I disagree with you is I, I wouldn't take A and B as having to be read together, they're.
Well, the, the, no, I, I hear you. What I said in abundance of caution, when I filed a regu, when I filed the subdivision application, I did it because I didn't know how you were going to construe this. I didn't know whether you were going to read a division into two or more parcels of lots ties into A. And I said, "I can read it that way." And that's why I filed the application, in abundance of caution. If you read it consistent with the last sentence of A, as Katie pointed out, then you're going to say, "Division into two or more, basically parcel, zoning parcels or lots." And that's what Katie's saying. You have to, you could, once you construe B, which I assume is what you did last time, maybe you didn't know it, but you took the position, B has to do with creating separate zoning lots. And we didn't want people to think, if you're creating separate zoning lots, that A somehow could come into the mix and be inconsistent. That's a logical, very good, Katie. That's a logical way of dividing the two up, and was logical then on that basis for the subdivision to be withdrawn, once you concluded B only referred to creating separate zoning lots.
And I think, I think that we should address the confusion in this regulation, because the last applicant who came before you with, under this regulation, did the same thing, where they submitted a subdivision also, which was subsequently withdrawn, but it's clearly confusing.
And then you approved it.
Mr. Fox was just saying that.
All right.
That we need to do something to clarify it.
I have another, another piece of this to speak with you about. First, the boxing cat application predates 2013, so.
Absolutely.
It does not take into account the present language of Sub B. But I'm also going to cite to site plan 1867, which was in 1997, and it's what is now abilis, but was then named GARC. And the, I think that the staff report in that, I'm going to read specifically from, page two of the staff report, it states, "While not stated, it is assumed that the applicant will be establishing a common interest ownership form of ownership in order to comply with section 6-17.2 to ensure continued zoning compliance." So, that staff, at that time, was of the opinion, as am I, that the words condominium and the sentence and the title of Sub A have a meaning and can't be ignored. The fact that this commission may have been inconsistent, so in G, in the GARC application, this commission mandated that both parcels continue to be in the same name.
That makes absolutely no sense to me.
Well, I'm just telling you.
I'm just telling you, it makes absolutely no sense to me. I think it's up to the, the commission as a whole to make a decision with respect to this issue. I, I addressed the issue, it doesn't, it doesn't, it uses the word wishes to create separate condominium, doesn't even say you have to, I just have to wish I do.
And the other, the other thing that was interesting about that case that you brought up, Mrs. Raymer, was that they did actually separate the parcels in that case for finance purposes, which is different in, in this scenario, because they're not, because it is maintaining it as one zoning lot, so.
They maintained it as one zoning lot in this.
With through ownership and through the cross easements, I believe.
It was, it was maintained as a single zone, and it was determined that no variance was necessary, because it was maintained as a single parcel for purposes of zoning.
But to, are you, will there be condominium documents that are associated with this?
Well, this is, I, I, no, they're not going to be, we're spending an inordinate amount of time on this.
Well, how does it work with the, with the pumps in the base, or the switches or what have you in the basement of the building?
They have an easement.
Is that going through easement?
They have an easement, yeah. They have an easement. You've consistently construed this regulation, again, if you want to clean it up in the future, look, we could have gone, we can go a number of ways here on this, but all we're asking is just that you apply consistency and logic, and, and let us move on the way you've let others move on.
Any other comments?
We're a little stuck, because we're.
Why are you stuck?
Your, is, did your engineer come?
No, but what do we need him for? Mr. Maitland, maybe here, Stephen.
Is there, are there any?
But Mr. Maitland solved the problem.
Was it, are there any comments from the public at all?
Well, I don't know what.
Anybody here from the public?
Subject.
Okay. Are we, are we ready to close tonight?
No, I'm just curious, if the engineer has, well, we have to close it tonight, so.
Yeah.
If the engineer is here.
It can be extended till January.
We're, we're not granting any extensions. We, we, there's no reason this isn't approved this evening. Reviewed and hopefully approved.
All right, I would, I would like to just have him tell us of his meeting, just so we have it on the record, and what was.
Even so you know, just so bring you up to speed, so much if you're here. We, Mr. Maitland, the commission and myself, just the new board, the new board, the new board, just want to show you something. Yeah, okay, then you can talk about it. Just want to show you what happened during our conversation, before you got here. Mr. Maitland, and then all the commission members appear to agree, suggested that with regard to this two-way traffic here, directly to the south of the building, that it just be allowed to go counterclockwise, and not have two-way traffic, but go in and out.
Actually, Mr. Tessie, if I might interrupt you, what might be more useful to us would be, you said your engineer spoke with Melissa today.
Right, I'm just bringing them up to speed, we're.
No, but what I'd like to have him recap, he talked to her.
Right.
I didn't understand, I didn't understand, all her comments say is that the rear parking plan and circulation are unacceptable. Then Mr. Tessie and Mr. Maitland kind of solved it from a revised drawing that Mr. Tessie had.
No, that's, that was prepared by Mr. Spina, but I'm going to turn it over to him right now.
I would like, Mr. Spina, if you could tell us, just, you talked to Melissa today, what transpired in the conversation, and then what you agreed to do, and where you both came out, because we don't have anything from them or an explanation of their point of view. So, if you could just give us that, that would kind of put it on the record for us.
Sure. I'm Steve Spina from JMC, for the record. I'm sorry I'm late, we're on a lot sooner than last month, but John hit on most of the points. So, when I met with Melissa Evans this morning of the Highway Division, her comment is pretty vague.
Yeah.
But the.
So, we were trying to understand.
It was one issue, was the, the route of circulation. So, she did not like clockwise, she wanted counterclockwise.
So, the.
So, the layout, the sizing, the dimensions of spaces and stalls, and setbacks and everything was fine. She just felt it was a little awkward for some of the ways that cars would back out of parking spaces in relation to, for instance, to Prospect Street driveway, or when they came down the main driveway from Railroad Avenue. She didn't like that they have to, that they weren't allowed to turn right, she, she wanted them to go right.
I got it, okay.
It's kind of a, I don't know, want to say a personal preference, but in her years and experience, you know, it was something we felt would work, but.
How do you control that? I mean, where do you, you put, there's no place to put a sign to tell somebody that.
Well, you draw it on the pavement, but people, you know.
Right, well, what we, what we previously had was signs on the fences and in the landscaped islands, and as well as paving markings.
May I ask you your professional opinion? If that were made one way, counterclockwise, is that going to be a problem?
Oh, in front?
Yes.
In front, right here?
Just that one little spot.
It would not be a, a problem, but I think it would cause unnecessary circulation in an already, to be honest, tight parking lot. I think it's a good, I think it's good because of the loading area that's in the front that's required, so we need space for that, but also there's, a significant amount of our parking lot is within the building, and cars could quickly access that, rather than having to circulate around into the lot. So, that was the one comment I had.
I'm just curious, then how do you control the traffic from making a right-hand turn there and going into one-way traffic?
Well, we, well, the new design is to make the right turn coming in.
I don't know, in front of, I'm only in front of the building, I'm not even, the rest of it, I'm not questioning. In front of the building, in other words, you can't make a right-hand turn.
Oh, going this way, right.
How do you stop?
We would put a sign here that says, "No right turn," and then a one-way sign next to it. I mean, you'd have to sign it as best as possible. You know, it, it may happen, as, as it does with any parking lot, sometimes, you know, someone who's not familiar, but again, this is a parking lot to be used by commuters, non-transient people are going to go here every day. You know, they should know where they can and can't go.
At the end of the meeting.
You may get one person, sorry.
At the end of the meeting, did she approve this concept?
She, she, she has not seen the plan yet. She approved a hand sketch of this plan on trace paper, and she said that what we could tell you as the board, and what she would do would, would email Katie that we met, so she hadn't emailed you.
Didn't email me, no.
Okay, she, she had promised me that she would send an email to you indicating that we had met, and we had worked out her comments, and we think we have a good solution, and that we should bring the plan with us tonight to go over it, so that.
Let me ask you a question.
You don't have that email, do you?
No.
Well, she was going to email Katie.
Yeah.
But she sent you an email saying that, or she just?
No, she told me that when I met with her this morning.
Okay.
Because I said, you know, you know, we're, we're here trying to meet with you, and we want to work out a solution, is there any way that you could? Is there any way that you could just let the, the board know that we're trying here and, you know, it's a last-minute comment that we got?
If we were to close this this evening and vote on it, then there would be potentially a condition to resolve that matter of one-way, two-way between the applicant and Melissa, and that would be.
And, no, let us, one more question for him.
No, I was just going to say, we would accept that the circulation plan has to be subject to the final approval of the.
Yeah, because I just want to ask you one more time, just to get it on the record. Her comment says the rear parking and circulation. What she means is how the circulation could affect the rear parking, is that correct?
Right, there was no, nothing about how we configured it or the angles.
Got it, okay, just confirming again that.
Right, it was a, a really, I mean, we, I was there for maybe fifteen minutes at most, and she was very quick.
I know, and look at all the time we had to spend because of one missing email.
But I think this is, this is what she wants.
Got it.
So what I'm going to do is get back to her with the plan, and she'll approve it.
Ask her to see if she'd like that counterclockwise movement there, but anyway. There was one other question regarding a light fixture in the parking lot over the sewer line, did that get resolved?
Well, the way we resolved it was, we spoke to Rich Feminella of the sewer division, and we, I think we were able to convince him that when we are ready to construct the project, let's uncover the sewer line in the air, let's dig up the ground in the area we want to put the light pole.
Yeah.
Because let's see if the sewer is where the record drawings say it is. I'm a little skeptical on that location.
Okay.
Because the existing sewer is shown now going through the building. So I, that may be what happens, but I think in the interest of reworking our lighting plan and parking lot, to move the light away a few feet, which we'll absolutely do if the sewer is there where the plan shows it is, we'll move the light and we'll adjust the landscaping.
You have an island or something that.
Right, this island right here, we, we have the light symmetrically right in the middle with two trees on each side, so it's a nice look. But if the sewer line is there and it obviously won't work, we'll, we'll relocate the light, and we've committed that to Rich.
Mr. McRae, Mr. McRae, you had some comments yesterday on the restoration of the building, do you want to?
Mr. Tessie, you're giving us a facade easement. Mr. Tessie?
Yeah, he's waiting for the.
Can't speak without the microphone.
You're giving us a facade easement, I'm just wondering, what's the purpose of this facade easement?
The, the, the purpose of it?
Yes.
The, the inherent purpose of it is, once the building is, is renovated per the plans, that that facade, that, that, that facade easement would reference to specific plans that were approved by this commission. We have to build in accordance with those plans, and that the easement is designed to be in perpetuity, that that facade, as approved by this commission, and I, I believe we had recommendations or from the H D C, which you have a copy of, hopefully, we discussed that at the last meeting, and with those recommendations being incorporated into the plans, you have now a perpetual protection of, of that particular facade that can only be changed by going back to the commission, you know, whether it's 2050 or 2020 or 2300.
It's my understanding that when we look at a facade easement, it's because the building either is or is going to be returned to its, you know, original architecture. I think there was a restaurant in Havemeyer, the.
I worked on that.
Yep.
Twelve Havemeyer.
Facade easement because we had issues with parking.
Sometimes he just.
What is it, Harbor House, there was an issue down there, and they were going to restore the building.
Well, the building, well, okay, let's be clear about Harbor House.
Incorporate the comments.
When you say restore the building, I don't think anything's ever been restored 100%. Maybe, but no matter what the building is, I don't, I would say the vast majority of them certainly are not brought back to exactly the way they are, were when they were built. That wasn't true, I know of Harbor House, I'm not sure of Havemeyer, it was really more the front facade there, the sides are not exactly, you know, becoming, they are what they are.
But we did the same thing for Eddie Mason, too.
And Eddie Mason, I happen to, I, I worked on Eddie Mason, familiar with that. Again, facade's not changed, in fact, it was changed. I think we, we, the client wanted to add a front porch, we had to do something with handicap on the side. We have facade easement at, across the street at the corner, spent a lot of time on that and Mason Street and, and Lewis Street on that north, on that northeast corner, we had put a big addition on the rear. That was worked out with the commission. You also see a big additions on a number of other buildings. It's never 100% restored. I think one of the primary purposes is to maintain a certain streetscape, but then you have to be practical in terms of what you really can and should do going forward.
I think you said it before, it, it's to maintain, it maintains the building in perpetuity.
In perpetuity, consistent with the plans, excuse me.
Doing that we're going forward.
Consistent with the plans approved by this planning and zoning commission for the renovation of that building. In this particular, in this particular case, I think it's worth bearing in mind that we're not asking for any accommodations of this commission.
I understand that.
Under, we didn't propose in H D C, we're doing it as a sign of good faith, or Mr. Granoff emphasized, good faith, he thought a lot of the building in its integrity, and didn't have a problem telling his commission, look, I think this is a, you know, I'm a resident here in this town, I'm a professional, I get it, this building should stay here, I'm going to retrofit it, give it that reuse, okay, that it, it should have, although substantially the, the same use, and the end of the day, we have a win-win situation for everyone. And he, he was willing to put his money where his mouth is and actually offer this. And I think you all appreciate it, and I know across the board, you've been trying to work with us on it, I know he appreciates it also.
Could you describe, I think that's existing and proposed, could you just quickly describe it, because a quick glance at it looks kind of like the same building.
Yeah, hi, Rich Granoff, Granoff Architects, actually the architect, and I'm the contract vendor for the building. So when I presented this design to the H T C, I specifically stated on the record that this was not a historical restoration of this building. The windows that are currently there, as you can see, have a three-foot dead panel at the top that was obviously added, I'm going to guess in the seventies, when they decided to drop a hung ceiling to the building. So the windows that are there are obviously not original. What we're proposing to do to the building is completely do a gut rehab of the entire structure and restore the architectural integrity of the, of the facade, which is basically the, the brick and cast stone on the building. But we're specifically trying to bring attention to the fact that historic, it's an adaptive reuse, and we are proposing windows that are a little cleaner than what probably was original in 1925, which probably had a lot of grids in them at the time, because glass technology was not at the point where you could put a full pane of glass in. So we're specifically using larger panes of glass to kind of represent, this is a forward-thinking architectural move for a beautiful old historic building. And the H T C unanimously discussed that and unanimously approved that this is a great adaptive reuse.
I'm just curious, then, because of that dropped panel in the, in what is today the existing building, was that due to lowered ceilings, you said?
That's my guess.
Are you then raising the ceilings in the building?
We are keeping the ceilings exposed in the new building, and we have thirteen-foot ceilings on the first floor and twelve-foot ceilings on the second floor.
Be true windows into the space.
Exactly, so there'd be a lot more light into the building as well internally.
And the rest of the things, I know that the modification of the, the canopy there is kind of whatever, it doesn't.
Yeah, well, the canopy, we're kind of restoring and rebuilding it, the, the garage doors are coming out, we're putting in windows, and actually on the back. On the back of the building, we're actually tearing off what I consider a bad addition at some point along the way, obviously was added on, and we're obviously tearing off the, the loading dock that was added at some point, and taking out this garage bay and putting in windows. So we're, we're really trying to improve the building greatly, I think, in the process. And you actually see all, all four sides of this building, as you know, driving around.
Oh, yeah.
You, you experienced it from all sides.
So let me ask you a question now, with the facade easement, would that be possible to restore that bump in the back there that you're taking off? Or would you say that that would be inconsistent with the facade easement?
Any changes.
Would have to come back.
Under the, the language of the facade easement, we're using the standard language from your actual H T C, you know, preservation easement document form, but we view under that document that any changes have to come back to this commission for approval with no guarantees of approval.
Okay.
I understand that.
Richard, would, I just wanted to ask you about the part of the restoration. It looks like you'll be having to use brick in order to complete some of, some of these days. So are you going to find brick that is like in kind, or you're going to try to, are you going to actually match it?
Well, the, the goal is to match it exactly, and we've done a lot of other restoration, as in the Greenwich Post Office, and found brick to match. We'll also have some extra bricks that we're taking off that we'll reuse, so the, the goal is that you don't know that we did the changes of the building.
And what about the, is it a brick wall in the parking lot?
Yeah, there's an existing brick wall on the Field Point Road that we're restoring that as well.
You are?
Yes.
Is that part of the easement, or?
It needs to be.
It's the right answer, if it needs to be, usually it applies to the building, not, I don't.
I'm just curious what.
It usually applies to the buildings, we attach the plans, we make them part of the record, and.
Is there a masonry cap on it?
There's a cast stone cap on top that we'll restore as well, yeah, consistent with the building.
We would have no reason to ever remove it, so if you wanted to note that that would be in the.
Painting wall, isn't it?
Yeah, so that's what I mean, we have no reason to remove it.
Okay, guys.
Before you move on, another question for Mr. Tessie.
Yes.
So the facade easement's being requested, but there's nothing given in return. And in a sense, you're actually renovating the building forward, and it seems to me, and I'd like to know what my other commission members think of this precedent that's being set, where we have a period building being renovated in a forward direction in its style, and then we're granting a facade easement. It would seem to me that, that it's actually backwards to the intent of what a facade easement is. At least it's backwards to me, that I renovate to what I want, and then I give the facade easement.
It doesn't bother me because of what Richard said, the, the windows aren't even original anyway, but, and you could always put some kind of period features back in, but I don't see the point of it myself. I think that it looks, it's an industrial-looking building, and it still looks industrial, and it looks like it's being remodeled and reused, so it looks.
And the H T C agreed with that logic.
Yeah.
And they're giving us the facade easement, or it's not, it's not a requirement of this application, it's, it's something the applicant is offering, which then keeps this building consistent for future generations. I don't see it as a negative.
I think that's, that's, that's the point I'm trying to get across, is that there's, the negative is in the perpetuity of it, and that if we have another, another historic facade somewhere else that comes in, and they actually need the facade easement for some kind of relief of an issue.
Ah.
Now the precedent's been set, we restore it to what we want, and then we, we ask for the facade easement.
No, I, I don't agree with, I, I mean, I think these are ad hoc, they, these are de novo, whatever you want, I mean, these are case by case, and I don't think we're setting any kind of a precedent.
I mean, one, one way to consider it would be that this is a preservation easement and not a historic preservation easement, so in, in, you know, in other words, it would take any structure, and then at that moment, going forward, that, that structure is being preserved, as opposed to what you're talking about, Mr. McRae, which would be when you restore, or where there is a historic, I mean, it just so happens that there is a historic component to this, so it's more of a philosophical conversation. But if, but in this particular instance, since there's no requirement on our end for them to be doing it, it's on their own accord, they've decided to preserve the easement, preserve the facade rather at, at a specific time.
At this time.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's important also to realize, it, it's much more than just trying to replicate a building that no one, as I pointed out earlier, really ever replicates. But when we, when we refer to these type of situations in your standard form, it runs the gamut, it's whether it has historical, cultural, or architectural merit, or a significant element of a streetscape, which we think this all does on three streets, that preservation, which fosters a sense of history, preserves architectural heritage of the town of Greenwich, therefore is worthy of enhancement, maintenance, permanent protection and preservation. I think that sums it all up.
I think.
We're definitely right within it.
Mr. Tessie, just.
Guys, I think, I think we've, I think we've maxed all on input on this.
Just one, one quick question. Before, when you said there wasn't going to be any condominium documents associated with this.
Right.
When, when the regulation in A talks about the commission granting the special permit approval for mixed-use development, and where the owner wishes to create separate condominium, then a division of the blah, 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 so what does that mean? What does a condominium mean in that sense, then?
I thought the commission, and I, actually, I touched upon this.
Tessie, enough.
No, I'm not close enough. Okay. Sorry, I was off to the side this time, actually.
These microphone challenges.
This has to do with how you want to construe that language on that, that basically that first sentence, because you speak in terms of a mixed-use develop, approval for a mixed-use development or residential or non-residential single-use development, and where the owner or developer wishes to create a separate condominium, then a division of the, tracking two parcels, et cetera. You can construe that, and I, to me, that's how you've construed that first sentence to mean there are a lot of options, and one of which could be a condominium development, another could be a mixed-use development, could be residential or non-residential single-use development. It's, it's just a sentence that I, I think was written in a context of a particular development, as I said, to my knowledge, again, it, it was Palmer Point, but allows the commission, at its essence, to have, as I said, a planning tool to allow for this two-lot division of the property in any one of these contexts, residential, non-residential, mixed-use, or, and I, to me, or one that may involve a condominium. There was in one instance, including Palmer Point, because if you run a read it and say, no, condom, create separate condominiums, there is in one instance, including Palmer Point, where separate condominiums were created. Palmer Point, there was one condominium created for the residences. The other parcel had office building, two, had an office building and a restaurant.
They have a condominium.
So I think that this, this certainly can be cleaned up a bit, but that is in fact the truth.
Mr. Tessie, I looked.
Yes.
Microfilm today.
Yes.
And it was a mixed-use condominium application.
That's what I said. I said there was a.
I just said it was an application for two condominiums.
No, I said it was not, I know what it was, Mrs. Raymer.
Yeah.
Okay, because I, I happen to represent, as you all know, as before you, not too long ago, the owner of the, the owner of the, the commercial portion of that property, we spent ad nauseam about docs and rights and everything over there, okay, and those, the residential units are within a condominium, that's one parcel. The other parcel, which was a ribbon, if you all recall, the old restaurant, which was converted to office building, was on the south side, then there was ribbon of ownership right along the water, where the River Club was, going all the way back, going all the way around, and then there appeared this other building, which is a, which is an office building to the left of the entrance to Palmer Point, both on one parcel, I can assure you, and you can look it up in the land records, those are not, that parcel is not a condominium.
So is that why in the, in the rest of the regulation under A, so it states that beginning part, and then it talks about the requirement that the site plan be filed in the town clerk's office, showing the division, referring to the site plan number, and containing the notation that the site plan has been approved for the property, and then further on talks about there not being any, an amended site plan should not be changed without the prior approval, and talks about the, the.
Cross easement.
Single property, with the point being that, in fact, when you have to file that site plan on the land records with the town clerk's office, that is in effect.
The condominiumizing.
Right, the, the condominiumizing of it, because it, that, that action is demonstrating that it's a single parcel.
Because, I, I think where we're, we're getting fuzzy is there's a part that is the buyer's condominium agreement with the seller, and that is separate from us, and the only thing we need to know. And the only thing we need to know is that they condominiumized the lot itself.
Right. Which is what happens all the time with two-family homes, when the commission approves two-family homes. We're very aware that down the road, they get, you know.
They turn into condominiums.
Right.
And somebody just needs to file it with the town clerk, but that's not our issue anymore.
All right. Let's stay with this now. Okay, guys? Are we ready to close? I'm ready to close. And again, one final, because we spent a lot of time. Any comments from the public? I want to check one last time. Okay, we're closed.
Thank you.
Big application, we should spend.
Thank you.
I'm sure Mr. Granoff is spending a lot of money on it.
To you folks in our audience, we appreciate very much your patience. We hope you did find some interest in what we were doing.
Okay, so now.
But we're now, we're now going to our 599 West Putnam, final site plan and special permit.
You missed your window. We waited, you weren't here, and we moved on. Now we're going to go back to the beginning.
No, I said that. I told him that.
But we have Tom Hager.
But thank you.
But we'll get you.
We understand. Please. Now, sitting, sitting on this, Ms. Raymer sat for Mr. Maitland last time, so she will continue to sit for him.
We want to send.
And then there will be Ms. Albin, Mr. Levy, Mr. Fox, and myself.
Next time we meet on the regulations, we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Helen.
I'm recused.
And you're recused. Thank you.
Don't you think?
I'm not recused.
No, you can, you can sit. You can sit.
To you.
We just got to keep your big mouth shut.
To you, and then you.
No, I can talk.
Yes.
To us, absolutely. And then I sent you a reminder.
We don't talk anything a lot.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ted O'Handlon from Robinson &amp; Cole for the applicant 599 West Putnam landlord. This is the building that's the headquarters of the Catterton Partners. We were here on October 20th, and we're asked by you all to return to the ARC and to review plans for preserving a portion of the wall along the road, and also seeing what other ideas that the ARC had. We went to the ARC last week, and we are, I'm going to let Sarah Vitek explain to you what we have come back with. We've submitted certain information to the, to the planner and discussed this with Ms. DeLuca. But we hope that we can resolve this tonight. Tonight, we have to close this hearing. This is the last night that this hearing can, can remain open. So we will move through this as quickly as possible. I understand there's some members of the public, so I would like to hold my comments until, until after that, but let Sarah explain the technical aspects of where we are and what we've learned from the ARC and prepared to do. So we look forward to this discussion. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is Sarah Vitek, V-I-T-E-K, from Granoff Architects. I'm, I'm going to try to quickly sort of reiterate and repeat where we've gotten to through ARC and zoning in terms of enhancements, improvements to the site, and sort of what we're presenting today. The first is we're, we're renovating generally the building within allowable zoning regulations using the FAR on-site. We've gotten a variance from Planning, Zoning Board of Appeals for the BOSK. And the items that really, in particular, we're trying to talk about tonight are the improvements, enhancements that we're proposing for the, A, the sightlines, when you come in and out of the property, as relates to the sidewalk, the widening of the sidewalk, the adding the, the snow shelf and grassy strips on both sides of the sidewalk, both to make it wider for pedestrians and to make snow plowing easier for the town. We are also proposing to add a new lower wall that meets zoning regulations, setback from the main road at three feet high. We have listened to both your comments and the ARC's in regards to the material and the, of that, the material and the construction of that wall, and we're now proposing it to be granite that matches the existing stone wall on the site. We also are making it out of stacked stone, both the first and the second wall, as opposed to concrete, which we originally came here with. The main elements that we sort of went back to ARC with are related to the, the structure on the site and leaving the stone wall around that. And I'm going to quickly show you the three options we presented to them that we had previously presented to you. Their comments generally were, and let me flip to that.
Thank you.
That they, they preferred our option B, which option, I can't remember if I showed you option A, B, and C in person before. Did we go over those last time?
I want to do it again.
Okay.
Go right ahead. We have very strong interest in this.
I know. So the option A that we came up with first was keeping the existing high, six-foot-high stone wall to the west of the existing structure, then keeping the higher eight-to-nine-foot wall at the structure location, and then stepping back on the east side of that structure to get you the wider sidewalk. And that's illustrated here. So you really low-wall that's helping sightlines and helping safety, and then stepping up and keeping everything west of the, the structure. Option B is the one that both the client and ARC have agreed that is sort of the preferred option that was presented. It gives you the low stone wall setback. It keeps the cottage or structure's wall where it is, but ties back at 90 degrees to low-wall on either side of it. So it's sort of prominent. It shows better than actually existing. It shows better than, than it is in real life, how the, where the old structure was on the post-road. And it also creates a little niche on either side for a stone seat for, for the public to use and sit at and enjoy. And then what it does for, for the public as well is, is beyond the structure towards the west, towards Weaver Street. It, it goes around the next telephone pole, just so you're not walking through it on the sidewalk. Then option C. Option C is the requested option that leaves the, the structure's wall floating and allows the sidewalk to go behind it. Unfortunately, it really creates, and you can see in the illustration here, 1.3, that it creates sort of a hiding spot for pedestrians or, or the bad guy, whoever it is. It just, it, it really made our, our client and, and their security consultants uncomfortable because as you, as you walk past the cottage on the back, A, if a car ever hit that, it could pin someone between that and the, the commercial property's wall. But it also, it really creates a hiding point that I don't think the, anyone's comfortable building or leaving freestanding. So we presented these to ARC and really came up with option B as the best. And the reason for that is really what I think was most interesting, is most interesting about that wall, that sort of tugs at the, the emotions of everybody, is, is the part that has holes in it, that sort of shows that it was part of an old structure. And, and that's what we're emphasizing in this design, and think it really gives the most to the community and sort of enhances, without leaving, honestly, a wall that's six-foot tall, that's a barrier, and that really is in poor repair.
I ask you a question.
Mm-hmm.
In mind of keeping that wall, sorry. In keeping that wall, one of the, one of the aspects of the wall, per se, that is interesting, I think, is that further down the wall, there is the arched opening. The, the wall goes down and then goes up, and it comes down again. Within it is the arched opening, which is quite a unique thing for the streetscape of, of that area. Was there ever a consideration given to maintaining that? In, in, in other words, the wall would be longer, if you will, the retained wall would be longer? Or as even a further option, if that could be done, you would pull the arched opening back a little bit closer to the, to the wall for the house, and it would, and reconstruct it, if you will, sort of pull back, giving more opening to the, to the BOSK area?
It was discussed, and actually, for three reasons, it was sort of pulled off the table internally very early on. One, it's, it's under six feet high, so it's not a functional opening if it.
I know that would be blocked off. You would never, the, the idea would be not that it is a functional opening, but it is an interesting, very interesting part of that wall.
It, it, it could possibly be filled in, because we wouldn't want, also for us, a safety or.
I understand that.
You know, security reasons, we wouldn't want.
Just degrade it.
Right.
I understand that.
And then the, the other reason is that it's, it's very close to the driveway, and it actually is part of the impediment to the sightlines.
I don't, I think in reality, it's not.
It would require pushing it back. It's, Eleanor, can you tell me how far off the, can you tell from these plans how far off the?
It's approximately 20 feet from that utility pole.
He says it's 20.
Yeah, we didn't measure it in particular, but I know, I know we're.
I don't think it's going to affect any sightlines.
And again, Richard.
We can check, for sure.
I think it is a very interesting feature of the wall, and I think that it would be a shame to lose it. I mean, it's a shame to lose what we're losing, and I think the compromise that you're asking from this commission is, 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 is a lot, since.
I definitely.
I don't feel that, that you had the, it's personal, my own personal opinion, but I don't feel that you had the, the authority or the right to remove that building under, under a couple of the regulations, specifically the modification of a, of an approved site plan.
Understood, and I'm, I'm not here to comment on that.
No, I understand. I'm just saying that, I understand, your attorney will speak to that. But the fact is, I think that, well, anyway, I just feel that that is, in what you're keeping, I think it's, it's a stronger statement to keep that arched opening, because it does represent a very unique feature in that wall.
I definitely, I understand your, your, you know, opinion on that, and I definitely, you know, I know there's, there are a fair number of arched openings and stone walls throughout Greenwich. It's definitely less rare, at least, or less interesting than, than the cottage, to my, to my knowledge, but I would.
But it's a part of the whole thing.
Mm-hmm. I'd like to just quickly sort of go into the other items that ARC had requested, and also, Katie.
I actually have. I'm looking for the existing photos of the cottage. I'm sorry. But we don't want them to block.
So in the handout, we've actually, in the last three days or so, we've, we've rendered and sort of come up with some options for a ghost option of the house that was requested by yourselves and, and by the ARC commission. And in, in the package, there's actually three, or two options for that. One is a steel structure that has some trellis, and it, the steel really takes the corners of the structure, emphasizes where those were, and then frames out where the previous openings of the, the building were, the doors and the windows.
Who knows what else you're talking about this?
Yeah, if, it's the last three small pages in this.
Do you have it on the board?
I don't have it large.
What's that?
They're small.
Do you have it in large size? What, what may be in order here?
Can we just do yours?
Yeah. Do you have it in large form?
I do not. I have the small ones, because we, we were working on them through today. Yes. So there's two options in there. One is a steel structure with lattice and for, for material like ivy to grow up, that's a little more reminiscent of the Venturi building for Ben Franklin's house in Philadelphia. And then the second one is more of a simplified wooden trellis structure that, that repeats the, the roof, roof lines of the old building, both of which, you know, show where the house was. But, but again, I, you know, there are options that, that the lawyers here will talk to.
You didn't like the Ben Franklin one?
Not that we didn't like it, but I think to mimic it identically would be a ripoff, like, it's just, it would be unfortunate.
Worse.
I don't know that, that's something that, as an architect, I would feel comfortable doing, mimicking something in exact structure. And quite honestly, it's, you know, the difference between Ben Franklin's house and this accessory structure, you know? It's hard for me to.
A little confused. Where is the chimney?
The chimney is between the.
No, I see a chimney there, but in terms of these, that's our pictures.
There's, there's, the, the accessory, the building itself, the structure, is still proposed to be removed from the site, including the chimney, which was a 1970s construction chimney.
So your proposal is, let's, let's deal with that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure where you are. What is the proposal?
My proposal would be to Ted O'Handlon, the proposal is that we be allowed to continue and complete the demolition of the cottage, but we would preserve the wall in one of the fashions that we've, that we've brought back here. So that these.
Do you have a design on what you're proposing?
Well, that's what we've just gone through with respect to the wall.
That this is?
And that's what, those are the studies that we were asked to look at, as to how you could, how you could create a ghost of what the former cottage had been.
Is she?
But the idea is that the approval would be, that the cottage would be, would be removed, the wall would be preserved in some fashion.
I don't understand what that means, in some fashion.
In other words, you have some choices before you that we're prepared to talk about tonight, and that, you know, that the ARC opined on, but you all haven't ruled, you all, it's up to you all to go on. They like the B, the proposal B that we put up there, that shows a portion of the wall, and the sidewalk, you know, is, is, well, let's put it back.
What would you see? Oh, excuse me.
You got it.
Perhaps you can help on this, architects.
I think that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think that what, what was clever about, I think it was, was it Venturi Scott Brown? Is that they really understood the essence of what they were trying to do. By framing out the building, you got a sense of the scale and, and, versus the landscape. So here, in the same way, that's still very appropriate, I think. And it doesn't have to be some kind of, you know, mesh material with some steel or anything. Some kind of representation of the scale of the building is, I think, certainly appropriate, and it's a compelling idea. So that's something that I would like to see.
The steel in those small drawings that were provided to each of you is, is actually mimicking the exact structure that, that was there, the.
You're talking about this?
Are you speaking?
Are you speaking of this one?
Yes.
This is the- It mimics the shape.
Of the, the house. It's the exact same location of the existing wall.
Is there a reason for all that wiring in there?
We don't need it. We were adding it so that we could have some ivy grow up it or something so that it's, it's a little less stark. And it's, I mean, the-
But it's not structurally necessary?
No, not at all.
You can have this clean line.
Well, it's dark because it's black.
And the chimney is between the, the smaller addition and the larger addition on the-
So you, you will have a chimney?
It will not, will not have a chimney, no.
He wants a chimney.
The reason, I mean, the, the idea is that the, the chimney was built in the 70s. So the idea is that if we, if we take the, demolish the cottage, the chimney comes out and that what would be, and these studies are intended to replicate where the building had been, not to, and not to preserve it.
Yeah. But I, I guess there's no roof line on one of them.
Yeah, it's the roof line that's cool on the Ben Franklin line.
And the, one of them does have the roof line, which I think makes it look-
But it doesn't replicate the shape of the building.
No, it's, it's a, a represent, a half representation of the building.
No, but if you're going to, if you're going to project this out, which apparently you are going to- Well, we have a, I was going to suggest if we could, we wanted to show them to you the technical aspects of it and then I'm going to address them after.
What was your question again? Was that?
No, but the fact, if I'm looking at option A, I mean, that doesn't really replicate the building that was there.
No.
Because it's much higher.
That's one of the problems.
But it, it apparently is projecting out from the wall. Right?
In option A, it has to because it has to straddle the wall. Right. Has to settle the wall.
But it's projecting out as, as is the existing cottage today. But it's not at the highest, sort of like a, a junior.
That's the problem with this is you can't recreate what's not there.
Why not? You just build it higher.
Yes, build it higher.
You're saying that, that you can't build this that high?
Well, the, the, the idea was is we were asked to study how you would, would create what they call a folly or a ghost of what had been there, recognizing that, that we're not required to keep what's there. In other words, the owner's position is that, and I'm going to get into this, is that this cottage has no utility and in fact interferes with the use of the property. And so the idea is that in return for removing the cottage, we have made various enhancements that would preserve the wall and we're prepared to discuss them. But the cottage has, you know, the cottage, both because of the way it, it, it blocks the sunlight into that and for what is proposed for that Bosc area, is just not, you know, from the beginning of our, of the applicant's plans for this headquarters property, is that that cottage was not, was not going to stay.
Well, it may have been your plans, but it wasn't on the plans submitted to this commission.
Oh, it absolutely was. That cottage was never on the plans that we have, we submitted from the, from the beginning. Is that we intended to, to, to remove the cottage and the wall and to, to place what's there now.
No, what Mr. Maitland means is the original approved site plan.
Well, the original approved site plan from 1977 did include the, did include the cottage, right? But the proposal and, and for the, this applicant was to remove the cottage.
And I think the first proposal you came, you had not even visited HDC yet and we asked you to go see them.
Right.
And they overwhelmingly denied your request to remove the cottage.
Well, there was no, we went to see them for an advisory view of what we're doing, but we never-
We understand that because they advised, they advised us and you together, but the fact is they advised you of their feeling about this. You certainly knew the commission's feeling about it because we wouldn't have directed you to HDC had we not wanted you.
Well, the commission's feeling about this was when we were proposed, you know, Mr. Fox said, if you want to lose the cottage, the wall, you got to redo the, the sidewalks. That was one thing. The, when we came back and last time you, then HDC said, again, if you're going to, if you're going to lose the cottage and the wall, then change the, the, the materials that the walls are made of. And we conceded and that, we're willing to do that. We came back and then again you said, we understand the circumstances with the pretty much demolition of the cottage, but if you're going to go forward, you got to preserve the wall. So that's when we came forward with these three things. So again, we have not tried to, to sugarcoat this or to change what our, what our intention was, is that this-
Mr. O'Hanlon, I'd like to try instead of rehashing to move forward because I think that we're, in this, in this photograph, what I think we were talking about is to make this higher, the frame higher, so that it replicates the dimensions of the house.
Or putting it another way, we really liked that Ben Franklin design.
And so, and so this, this is a beginning to what is in our page 62, which is a smaller version of the Ben Franklin. And we would like to try and resolve this with you. We know that there's 61710, which talks about historical structures. So we are not without authority in pushing back and you violated a site plan. And I don't think the demolition application made any reference to the fact that there was a site plan governing it. Was, was that on the demolition permit?
I'm not, I'm not, I don't know. I didn't do the demolition. The demolition, well, the demolition application was handled by the town and approved.
But they were lacking certain information.
Respectfully, have you seen the demolition application to say that?
No, I've seen the notice that was sent out.
Yeah, I haven't, so I don't think either of us can speak to that, but the demolition permit was filed, was accepted.
So I would like to just try to keep this off a hostile basis and try to move us forward because I am certain there's a consensus among this group and we'd like to try and solve this problem. So my question is, if you take all that wiring out of there, I may not be using technical terms, but, and raise the shape of this to match the shape of the structure, that's the question I'm asking you. So that it is in effect rather more like the Ben Franklin ghost.
It, it does match the shape of the structure.
You're saying that this is as tall?
That's, that's as tall as the structure, not, not the roof line, but the tall as the wall that's, that's facing the street. That's how tall it is.
And could you put a roof line on the one that has the wire on it?
Perfect. Can you put a roof line on it? So it really is exactly the concept of the Ben Franklin ghost building. That's what we're asking you to do. Recreate the shape so that it is the true ghost concept.
The, I just don't want, I have these, I want to address these points, but I, you know, I know there are other people who want to hear and we have the right to speak at the last and I'd like to do it at the end if I could and let people speak who want to hear. But I hear you and I'll address that one when I come back.
Thank you.
Well, let's hear, let's spend a moment now, let's hear from the public. Who wants to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Stephen Bishop and I'm chairman of the Historic District Commission. And I'm sorry to be here under these circumstances. You know, we understand that you ask us for advisory opinions and we're happy to give you that, but we do expect that no action will be taken until you act on our, on your application, taking our advisory opinion into account, which you may take or you may not take. But we were extremely disappointed to see that the building was demolished before you had even acted on this. We, we like this building. We felt very strongly that it was an important part of the post road down there, that it was, everybody loved this building. I can't tell you how many people I've talked to say, boy, you know, that is just such a great thing there, you know? It's like a throwback to the old days. It's like the old post road. It's not much, but it's something, you know? We got a few things here and there and we need to try to hang on to them. So we were extremely disappointed. You know, they came before us and we try to be very flexible with people. I understand that to save parts of history, you need to be flexible. Buildings have to work, things have to progress, but you know, if you can give a little bit here and there to try and save some of the history of our town, I think that that's a great thing. And it has been done a few times along the post road, you know? The, the auto dealer, you know, where it was prey, I forget what it is now, but you know, there's, there's the house there, the old house that's, that's been preserved and that's, that's a part of history that you see. And you drive down the road and you say, boy, that's what it used to be like, you know? Remember? You point it out to your, your kids, you say, that was like in the 1900s or in the 1700s or something, you know? Commerce goes on and we understand that, but you know, we got no indication from this applicant that they were willing to be flexible at all. I mean, we, I would bend over backwards if they'd come in and say, we'll save this, we could do this. We may end up with half a loaf, we might end up with a quarter of a loaf, I don't know. But generally we say yes, but we got nothing out of these people. And, and, and on the other side, what do we get? We get this demolition. We get this demolition and, and I just think that it's absolutely outrageous. I mean, I think it's zoning by demolition. And I think if this commission puts up with it, it sets a very, very bad precedent. So, and, and you know, there is, there is the concept in the law of an applicant coming to you with clean hands. And, and in the law, that's an important thing. If somebody comes to you with clean hands, then you take a lot into account from them. But I don't think that this applicant has come to you with clean hands. And I think you need to be very strong on this. I mean, frankly, I think, you know, the metal structure may be okay. Frankly, I'd like to see the wooden structure put back. I think that's what really sort of sends the message that this was, when you go by and see this metal structure, you're going to say, well, what the hell is that? That, oh, that's because of some zoning thing, you know? As opposed to see, seeing a real building, you're going to say, yeah, you know, you know, back in the early 1900s or late 1800s, this is the kind of thing that was, that was along here. And you know, this isn't a situation where this place has got to come down because they, it can't, it's in the way of a new building or, or you know, we see demolitions all the time where they got to take the house down because they want a new house. Well, you know, we very rarely ever object to those, but this is one where we thought, well, this is something that could be saved because it, it's not mandatory. It's, it's part of some image concept that these people have and, and they're going to destroy the image of our town so that they can enhance their image. So I, you know, that's, I believe the opinion of, of all the members of, of the Historic District Commission and I, I really hate to have you people in this position where I, I think you're up against some kind of deadline. I don't know, that ins and outs of that. Can they waive that deadline? No.
Deadlines are not an issue here.
So, so, okay. But I mean, you know, it's been postponed twice. I, I would have been here the last time, but I couldn't because I, I had to be at my-
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Okay. Yes.
Trying to, to do both things at the same time, would, would you feel that if they reconstructed the cottage further to the west, allowing them to keep the openness to the building that they're seeking, would you consider that a reasonable accommodation? Would that be a capture, you know?
You know, I can only speak for myself, but, but I, I think it would, you know? I, I, as I say, we're willing to compromise, we're willing to get-
It would all be fake.
We understand.
If it had, still gave you that same, that feeling-
Still be, there's no reason that it cannot be reconstructed, in my opinion.
No, no. And if it was a little farther west, I don't think that that would-
The movement of it wouldn't affect you?
No.
It could, okay, thank you.
Now, the wall is a different story, you know? I mean, how that ties in with the wall, because the building was sort of part of the wall and-
Exactly.
And so I-
No, I understand.
That has to be accommodated.
Have to reconstruct the wall or what, but you know?
Thank you.
Okay.
Just one more question.
Sure.
Mr. Maitland's comment about keeping the wall through the gate opening, can you add your personal opinion to that?
Well, I'd love to, you know, you know, it's always a question of what can you get in this stuff, but I think the gate is a very important thing. You know, I think it adds a lot and it may not be utilitarian, but you know, those are the kind of things that add architectural detail, that tell a story, you know?
Thank you.
Where we've been. Okay. Thank you.
Who else would like to speak? Can I, is there anybody back there would like to speak?
Mrs. Strachan.
My name is, is Davida Strachan.
Your name, ma'am?
Sorry, sorry?
Yeah, we got it.
All right.
I didn't hear your name.
Davida Strachan. I am speaking in response to the Greenwich Preservation Network's October 1 letter to Chairman Heller and the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission in response to Robinson and Cole's letter of October 20th. First of all, we want to thank the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission for their dedication to solving important and often very difficult issues relating to the current and future landscape and streetscapes of the town of Greenwich. 599 West Putnam Avenue provides a good example of how the P and Z addresses the resolution of potential tension between private property development objectives and the preservation goals of the public policy of the town of Greenwich in regulating development for the long-term benefit of the town. The nascent Greenwich Preservation Network is concerned with both property rights and preservation policy in Greenwich. It brings together Greenwich citizens who are members of Greenwich nonprofit organizations concerned about preservation, including the Greenwich Tree Conservancy, the Greenwich Land Trust, the Greenwich Point Conservancy, the Greenwich Preservation Trust, and the Greenwich Historical Society, which facilitated this network devoted to supporting the preservation goals of the town. The forum's views are shared with members of the Historic District Commission, the Architectural Review Committee, and members of Planning and Zoning Department of the Town of Greenwich, in the sole interest of fostering preservation of the town's landscape and streetscapes for current and future generations. Our comments in our letter reflect our concerns.
Thank you, ma'am. Who else, please? Is anybody back there?
Yes.
My name is Steve Schacter. I am the managing member of the two entities that developed and owned the Greenwich Office Park, including 599 West Putnam Avenue. That development and our ownership spanned nearly three decades, beginning in the late 60s and ending with our sale of the office park in 1997. 599 West Putnam Avenue, or OP7 as we called it, was one of the last of the nine buildings in the park to be developed. When I saw the article in the Greenwich Times several weeks ago about the demolition of the small cottage on the property, I was, as you might imagine, quite sad. I immediately sent the article to my partners who had the same reactions. As I thought about it, however, especially in the context of the controversy described in the article, I was able to separate emotion from objectivity. More important and more to the point, I was able to separate in my own mind sentimental value from historical value. It's hard to imagine that anyone in Greenwich has a greater sentimental attachment to that cottage than our group. It doesn't follow that our sentimentality, nor anyone else's, should stand in the way of property improvement, emphasis on improvement. I spoke to my partner who was the job super in his early twenties at the time when 599 was built. He barely had any recollection whatsoever of the cottage. I keep referring to it as a cottage, even though it was really a shed, a garage when we developed the property. He certainly recalled no architectural or historical significance back then. We used it to house one of our employees, in fact, one of our most valuable employees, after he, a very accomplished carpenter, remodeled it to make it a suitable residence for himself and his wife. That employee is long gone. That structure served a purpose decades ago and then was allowed to outlive that purpose. It's funny, this is hardly the first demolition and redevelopment at the office park that my partners and I have found bittersweet. GOP 1 on Weaver Street was recently gutted to the steel and rebuilt. I was sad to see our building being effectively torn down, but the truth is that it was over half a century old and was replaced with something that even we, no, especially we, think is nicer, certainly for the 21st century than what it replaced. I've seen the plans for 599, including the approach from Putnam Avenue. I think it looks better than it did with the house on the wall. The fact is that our group as developers, we often sacrificed pulling the last dollar out of the ground in order to build something respectful of the relevant streetscape. I think that Catterden's plans for 599, including the demolition of the old shed, is something we might have done and been proud of. This is one of those times that it's okay to shed a tear over the fact that nothing's forever and then- forever, and then move forward by remembering that time marches on.
Thank you.
So let me ask you...
Who else, please? Anybody else back there?
My name is Vicky Sheridan.
Pass this on to Katie.
I'd like a point of clarification. The judgment call that was made by the Historic District Commissioners was not sentimental. It was not emotional. It was factual. It was based on the understanding that we have recently celebrated our 375th anniversary in this town. We are able to do that because people have cared enough to save and preserve. People have cared enough to save and preserve buildings that perhaps George Washington did not sleep in, Abraham Lincoln did not walk in, but they were vernacular architecture, and they were important to this community. Ms. Strachan, who just spoke, chaired the 375th anniversary for this town. Our decision was in no way emotional or sentimental. It was factual. If we do not maintain part of our past, we will lose our ability to move forward. We will lose our ability to tell our children, this is what this road was at one time, a major thoroughfare between New York and Boston. And your ancestors traveled these roads, and they suffered, and they suffered for you. So, sentimentality had no role in this decision. It was factual. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else now? Okay. Before you talk again, any other comments from the commission? Anybody wanna make comments?
I think when he's done, I would...
You wanna wait till he's done?
Yes.
Anybody else wanna wait till he's done?
Yeah.
Well...
Or you wanna say something first?
No, I do. I do want to make a suggestion, and that is what I, the question that I directed to Mr. Bishop. And that is, instead of rebuilding or building a ghost structure and so forth, why not go to the west, so they're completely free of the building and so forth, and reconstruct the building in a position where it won't bother trees and so forth? The owner can get what he wants to modernize the front door for his building, and the cottage will be preserved, and the archway and the wall can be preserved. And I think in that way, we are preserving the past. It's being relocated, if you will, and rebuilt because it's been... I mean, there's been some opinion that some, whatever's there, can, a lot of it could be reused. Whether that's true or not, I don't know, but it would be the recreation of what was there.
And I would just like to reiterate that, you know, I'm only interested in seeing some kind of restoration or memorialization of the structure. So I don't know if I need to say any more than that, but that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, you probably do. What do you mean by that?
Either it's memorialized so that there is some kind of public space that is referential to this building, which would include whatever artifacts are left, the ramparts of the building, and some benches, and maybe even some signage. A ghost structure or the restoration of the building. Something which codifies the importance of what we're talking about here, preserving this idea about the streetscape and what is important to us in our town.
I wanna add one comment before you go. I think, excuse me, I think Mr. Maitland's comment is right on. I understand the site improvement in terms of having a headquarters there, and a better view from Putnam, all those good things happening with the corporate headquarters for the town. And it's unfortunate that we had this, let's call it accident, for want of a better word. But Mr. Maitland's comment is 100% on. That building is worth preserving, and there could be flexibility in deciding where, you know, obviously within logical reason. He suggests to the west, perhaps even to the corner, and you preserve and reenact as much as you can of what was there. I think that's a wonderful solution to the problem.
In fact, I think this commission, through Katie, presented to you a plan, a site plan, which had representations to do just exactly what Mr. Maitland just asked of you, and also what I just asked of you.
You wanna talk to that, Ms. Katie? Do you wanna talk to that?
Yes. I didn't give a plan, but I did meet with the applicant after the applicant's representatives, after the last meeting, and we discussed the discussion that had taken place at the last meeting. Effectively, the words that you're speaking this evening, memorializing the cottage, taking into account the safety and along that sidewalk, so all of the things that you're discussing here. So we didn't, we didn't, I didn't go as far as discussing any sort of plan or drawing with them, but we did discuss saving the trees on the western side of the property. We discussed pushing the wall back where appropriate. We discussed some of the options that have now, you've seen in the three options that they're presenting here, things like having the wall be retained and having the walkway go behind, which is the third option. We did talk about option B, which was some of the pieces that I've just described in keeping some of the trees there, moving the sidewalk back in other areas, and giving some sort of acknowledgement or memorialization to the cottage. We did discuss this, quote, "ghost structure" business at that meeting, which wasn't incorporated into the three options. You can see that that option's now being offered here this evening. So I think that would be a better way to represent our conversation than to say, perhaps, that we discussed a specific plan, because we didn't discuss a specific plan. We talked about various options and thoughts that came out at the last meeting.
All right. I just, thank you for the clarification. I thought you actually gave them the plan that you produced. To clarify, Richard, your point, if they reconstruct the structure to the west, they would maintain the FAR, and they could utilize that building for their own use? Or was it for public use?
Well, I don't, I guess I'm more concerned about trying to preserve the past, or at least the image of the past and what that meant. And I do think that it's a, I think Greenwich is quite a unique situation. I'm not sure that this situation is found anywhere else in town, and it would seem... And I did bring it up with Mr. Bishop because I just wanted to get his feeling on it, and without trying to put words in his mouth, I thought he was supportive of it, as representing and keeping what's in the past. And I think the work to build this ghost structure and so forth, it cannot cost a lot more to reproduce it as a frame structure and actually reproduce the building, but just in a different location.
Maybe that's the question.
So I don't think it's a big deal, but I think in return, what the applicant gets, I think, is what they wanted with the demolition of the cottage, is they wanted more of an open view to the building.
I personally prefer Mr. Maitland's idea. I'm also in that camp, because creating a ghost structure does not really...
Doesn't really look like this.
It doesn't really look like it belongs there.
It's just, it's not it.
Okay. Do you wanna make comments?
Yeah, and I'm happy, when I suggested, I wanted to wait...
Raise the microphone a little bit.
I wanted to make sure that the record was complete, and the record is now complete. And I'm happy to discuss this back and forth with each of you. But the, and I appreciate, Mr. Chairman, your concession that the demolition was a mistake, because it was. And I think anybody who sees where we are now would agree that we didn't advance our cause much by that mistake. But we are where we are. And so what the applicant's position is, and we've been trying to, from the beginning, to key off of the suggestions you've made. It's been clear from the start that the applicant did not want to keep and saw no reason to keep that building or that wall. And we undertook, and that building and that wall are all on private property. They have never been designated or sought to be designated by anyone as historic. And while it's clear that there's an emotional attachment to it, and respectfully, I have to disagree, I think the statements you've heard tonight are proof of that. There's a very strong emotional attachment to it. But I want to ask you, has this commission ever imposed the label "historical" on a building against the owner's wishes, and in the absence of any evidence of that? And this is where, again, Catterton is a first-time property owner in Greenwich. It's not in the development business. And this is what it sees as its headquarters, and it keyed off, using the best architects in town, what else you have approved in there. Next door was Starwood. Across the street was CVS. And what it proposed was precisely what the vernacular of that street is today. And what it might have been in the past, nobody knows, because you've chosen not to preserve it. And we, but we undertook, and we understood from the first meeting with Ms. DeLuca, that there was gonna be pushback on this issue. And notwithstanding the fact that this is private property and has never been suggested as historical, we undertook to make that demonstration to you.
Mr. O'Handlon, I'm sorry, but you are making statements which are not accurate.
I disagree. Nothing I've said is not accurate.
You have the view that it is not historic.
We don't have a view. We have demonstrated with facts, and there has been no evidence, facts, offered by anyone other than what we have offered. And we undertook to look at the assessor's records, the library, the historical society, the land records, and we have provided you with an exhaustive study of what that house is. And respectfully, to some of the people speaking tonight, they don't even know what that house is.
I don't think we want to review that now. You're getting, you got a sensitivity among, I think, four commissioners or three, that is starting to give some ideas. And I think your best, the best use of your time now is to react to those thoughts.
I'll move on then, but it just, it's gotta be done in the context of the record.
Because otherwise, we'll get into an argument with you, because I agree with what you said, and I don't wanna go back into who did what and who didn't, and so on and so forth. That's what I call for right now.
Okay.
Just one thing. I would like to just say that under the special permit standards, number 10...
That's correct.
Preserve land, preserve land, structures, or features having special historical, cultural, or architectural merit.
And the evidence that we've offered is that these have no historical, architectural, or cultural merit. And respectfully, Mr. Maitland, nobody has offered any facts to counter what we have offered. We have given you a detailed history of this. This cottage was rebuilt in the late 1970s, and it was, and that's all it is. And we have demonstrated through Mr. Granoff, a recognized architectural historian, that it has no, it doesn't represent, it did not represent any period, any materials, or any cultural...
Mr. O'Handlon, you did not qualify him as an expert. He is your architect. He has an interest in the outcome of this.
Oh, he does. Just because he does not have an interest in the outcome, and he identified himself as an architectural historian and expert in this, and nobody challenges credentials.
I'm trying to get you to, are you looking for, to make statements for the record, or do you wanna...
I'm just trying to establish the context of where we are. So based on where we are...
Respond to what they're saying to you. We have some different opinions here, but you've got several commissioners who've voiced a strong preference. Come back to us and tell us where we can get a meeting of the minds.
Okay. A cottage, a cottage-like structure located in that, where that is, wherever, whether it's further west or on the, in the existing location, presents several impediments for the owners. One, it's dangerous. If, that's why you have setbacks. You don't put buildings next to a road. No responsible employer would build a structure that close to the road and expect an employee to work there.
If you were to rebuild it, you wouldn't have that problem.
We absolutely would. That's one of the reasons why we didn't do this. That's a dangerous location for building.
So you would move it?
You what?
You could move it. That was the whole point of what Mr. Maitland was saying.
You want, you can't slide it down. You've got the same problem. If you slide that...
I think that you're not understanding.
Down along the wall, you're still right along the road.
Move it back.
Okay.
We don't mind that.
I'm gonna help Mr. O'Handlon here.
Can you look at this, look at what the property, the other reason is that is of no use to the owner, because that is already a constrained lot. You can't, you don't have any room to put it in there.
Well, you do, actually.
Of course I do.
Look at where the setback line is.
Yeah, you do.
And look at where there's significant ledge there. That's why that property's never been developed right there.
Mr. O'Handlon, you gave us a proposal tonight, which has that wall where it has always been, and you were prepared to do that tonight. So why, that's what I understood your proposal, really. Plan B has that wall where it's been for, I believe, 100-plus years. And our suggestion is that you move it down where it's not in your way, because apparently you view it as in your way. So, the cottage...
We have no use for the cottage.
The wall is the safety issue, is it not? It's proximity to the street?
Oh, and the light and the visibility of their building.
Yeah, the cottage, the cottage is a significant impediment to use of that property. The reason we got a variance...
That's a different question than safety. If you were prepared to have that wall retained where it is, you cannot have a safety issue with it. You're contradicting yourself. So moving it down the street to exactly the same position vis-à-vis the street...
You're confusing the two structures. We have no problem with the wall. In fact, one of the things we're prepared to do tonight is to offer, we will live with the wall as it is. We will clean it up, we will repoint it, and we will retain the entire wall, subject to fixing a sightline at the end, some adjustment for the sightlines at the end. I'm moving ahead to what you're, you want me to do. So I'm skipping over the background. But we cannot move the cottage, because nobody has any use for the cottage, and you don't wanna put workers in a building that's right next to the... That wall provides no protection from a vehicle.
It would not need to have, be used. It would just simply be a memorial.
But again, that's why I get to this, and this is why this background of this, there has been no demonstration that this building, no demonstration in the record, that this building is anything but private property, and therefore have you...
I know.
Mr. O'Handlon...
Timeout. Timeout.
With the exception, I wanted to mention this, with the exception of the 1977 site plan approval, though, the Planning and Zoning Commission in 1977 already opined on that exact issue under Site Plan Number 345. In the minutes from the '77, the commission stated, quote, "They discussed the possibility of retaining certain outbuildings on properties in the business zones when the buildings would have a significant impact on retaining the character of the neighborhood." Since the text amendment to that section was ultimately approved, and this was the section used to allow this accessory structure to remain when the building was constructed, it indicates that this structure was viewed and approved already once by the Planning and Zoning Commission as having a significant impact on retaining the character of the neighborhood.
And Starwood wasn't there?
And we excluded it from the FAR.
And it's been excluded from the FAR, so it's already, that finding's already been made.
So that it would be retained. So there is a record. But that being said, hold on just a second. I'm actually trying to come over, I think I'm sort of in between you and the commission. I don't understand the whole idea of rebuilding it, because it's gone, and it would be fake and make pretend, and I sort of don't, I don't understand that. It's gone now. They did it, it's done. I think the wall is still there, the gate is still there. We keep, we decide what we wanna keep of what still exists. We do a memorialization. We do a memorialization. But I don't understand rebuilding the cottage because.
But that's, that's a valid opinion.
So, right.
In other words, it's another opinion.
It's an opinion.
What I'd like to get out of this gentleman is just say yes or no. One idea came through was to, to reconstruct a cottage, to use that expression, west. And what you're saying is no.
No.
Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
You would not do that.
Would not do that.
That's firm.
So I'm trying to move us to the next one.
Now, what is that? Well, okay, now, so you're saying another possibility.
Because he's, they're saying no. We're closing it tonight. So this is our opportunity to try to find a compromise that works for everybody. So if they're, if they're adamant, no, what instead works?
So what about option B? Option B, except that you also keep the arch, so you don't, you don't bring the wall back so far along that line. So it would be option B, except you keep the archway and you do the ghost structure where it's the one that's got the, the wire mesh, but without the wire mesh and the roof line. So you, you would kind of combine those two ghost structures.
The ghost structure is a no because of the, because of the plans for the use of, I mean, again, the reason we got a variance was because we don't have any property anywhere else.
And why did you show us ghost structures?
We were ordered to study it. And I think it doesn't, as you've, some of you have noted, it doesn't work very well. It doesn't look like the old, like the cottage that was there.
Oh, because you didn't do one that looked like what we had said to do. That seems like a really good compromise. So you, to Mrs. Raymer's point, you get the light, you get the, the visibility of the office building, you can, you mimic that kind of structure that you're putting on the building anyway, carries out onto the street. Because I'm, I'm no architect, but it seems like you're doing that kind of stuff there anyway. And then there's this other piece on the street. And it's a compromise that everybody seems to be able to live with. You guys aren't budging on it. I mean.
Well, what we're prepared to budge on, and we've been trying to follow the, the hints you've given in terms of the.
Yeah, I thought Mrs. DeLuca was pretty clear.
Yeah, but the, the problem with the, with the ghost one, it doesn't do anything. If you look out from the outside, it looks like, the ghost, the ghost looks like a, a building under construction. I mean, it doesn't evoke anything.
Mr. O'Handlon, you keep expressing your personal opinion about these matters.
I think he may be reflecting his client.
You are not, or your clients, but you are not listening.
I'm not reflecting my personal opinion. I'm just, I'm saying what my client's view is. I'm not, my personal opinion has nothing to do with this.
Fine. Your client's opinion. But you are not trying to solve this problem, Mr. O'Handlon.
We very much are, because we're sensitive where we are, what's going on here. I mean, this, we have demonstrated as far as, and you all don't want to hear, what, that why we can't use for very valid zoning reasons, safety, security, utility, the existing cottage. We are prepared, in response to your question, to preserve part of the wall so that we could also fix the sidewalk, which is what you wanted. But let me tell you what we're prepared to do further. And it's not, we'll just leave the wall there. We went back.
Just to clarify the record, I went on the record at your first hearing because your wall was lowering the existing wall in the exact same place. And I suggested that was not in keeping. And if you were going to do that, it should be moved back. Not the fact that I said, go ahead and tear the wall down. It was, we listened to the record. It was because your first attempt was to lower the existing wall, tear it out, and build a brand-new wall in the exact same location, right next to the sidewalk, which is not what I thought was in keeping with the character.
I, you know, you're right. And so what we thought was responsive to that was doing that. But if you are, if the commission is of the mind that that wall is, we can, we can clean up the wall, we can repoint it, we can make it, we can keep the whole thing. We'd like to keep, we'd like to, to fix a sightline at the, at the east end of it. But if you want to keep that entire wall along there, that's something that we're prepared to do. Because we understand that the cottage, but we understand that the cottage is gone. It's just, you know, the materials are there, the, the town has had an opportunity to look at it. It's a, it's a late 1940s building.
Sir, it is a building that evolved over time as many historic buildings do. Mr. Levy and I have both lived in carriage houses. We know what happens to them. They're not junk. They have historic merit. It is, it is inappropriate for you to keep saying it has no merit.
It's not inappropriate. This is an owner, this is the owner's.
Historic organizations that we rely on and that have merit have told us that it has merit.
They can't even tell you when it was built. We're the only ones who know anything about that structure. And if you read our letter, you'll see. That's a 19, late 1970s building that was completely, the foundation was poured, the floors were raised. It does not have historic value. We understand there's an emotional component to this.
Mr. O'Handlon.
But it's not, but it's not historical. I'd like to finish. In return for removing the cottage, we are prepared to do any of the, the versions of the, the, leave the wall alone completely for the length of the property, subject to the sightlines, and clean it up. Respectfully, I think that would preserve, for people coming in who remembered what was there, more of what it is than seeing a, some kind of superstructure over it. But that's what the, you know, we, Catterton recognizes that, that there is this attachment to it. And that's what we're, we're prepared to.
Does Catterton realize, though, that the commission does have the authority under the regulations to, to take action on what's being proposed on, on the atrium area? And if you maintain the wall, they can, under the regulation, require you to restore the cottage. Because it's, it's, you violated the site plan approval. So they could theoretically take positive action on approving this, subject to you restoring the cottage. Does Catterton realize?
Catterton is aware of what the, what the commission's options are. It just hopes that, having heard us and understanding that this was a mistake and was not intended to disrespect this commission, but, but recognizing what was there is not worthy of restoration because it does not have any utility under any circumstance that, that it's willing to work with the commission in any other way. That's the, you know, the, and we, respectfully, I thought that's where we were going when, when the, in the dialogue before about fixing the sidewalk, about, I'm not trying to mischaracterize what anybody has said, about, about retaining a part of the wall. But we went back and we realized that, one, a structural engineer has looked at the wall because we're concerned about it. It is sound, so it can stay. We went back and looked at the notes from the discussions with the, the Highway Department. And they don't have any, the, the improvement of the sidewalk was mainly for the benefit of the town, not a requirement there. So if you all want to maintain the, the wall, then we'll fix it up and, and keep it there. But, but the.
I don't think the wall, per se, is controversial with us. You know, we could work that out. It's, what you're, what, what you're doing is, what you're, what we have to decide upon, really, is, is, is really what to do with the cottage.
Yeah.
From our viewpoint. Because there's obvious, very strong differences of opinion.
Right.
About the value of the cottage. So I think that's, that's the way it's, that's the way you're laying it out.
And that's the way, the only way I can lay it out. I'm not trying to.
Well, don't say it's the only way you can lay it out. What you're saying is the only way you want to lay it out.
No, it's the only way, we, there's no other, you know, we're not, what, what's happened has happened. And.
I'm not talking about what's happened. Because you made a comment that architecturally, or engineering, whatever the proper word is, it's not sound to, to build a cottage west.
Right.
You're saying architecturally or engineering-wise, it's not possible. Did I read that correct or am I wrong?
No, I'm saying.
Or you don't want to do it.
I'm saying we don't want to do it because, one, we don't need a structure there. And two, to put a structure.
What do you mean, you don't need a structure?
There's nothing that we can use, I mean, the, the client has to use the property.
What?
The owner wants to use the property.
He wants to use that west corner.
He wants to enjoy, you know, that's the only, that's the only yard that exists on that, on that lot.
The only yard that exists.
Ergo, the, the suggestion that you recreate it to the west where you're not doing anything with it. That right now, your plans show existing to remain.
Right. I don't have a topographical, but one that rises up, there's significant ledge there. We're leaving the trees there at your request. But again, it's, I think it would be a lot of blasting and a lot of, you know, we, we haven't even explored that. But if you look at where the setbacks are and all, that.
Let's put it this way. The interest would be how it appears from the street. If, if the back wall of the thing sloped because of some ledge or something, it would be irrelevant. You say you have no use for it.
No, no use for a building.
That's fine.
So the question wins, why, why require that it be there?
Because you took away a part of it, of the character of the street, that's why. I mean, and.
You say that, but I can only point to the record. And there's, there's, you know, you say that, and I understand.
I'm sorry. We, we depend upon the Historic District Commission to advise us of what their feelings are. They're the ones who give us advice on historic structures in the town of Greenwich.
But are you aware that the?
They did an impassioned speech this evening.
Right.
And also apparently by reconstructing the meeting that they had with you.
They offered.
Use the word "inflexible."
No, they, well, I wouldn't agree with that because we.
Well, it's his, excuse me, it was his word, wasn't it?
I understand that. But, but again, there were no, there was no information offered by the Historic District Commission or anyone on its behalf at that meeting. There was not, no disagreement with anything that we offered. And we provided them with the entire history that we had prepared of the, of the, of the property. And there was no suggestion that that was either incomplete or inaccurate. And, and nor was there at the HDC or here by any member of the public. But that's why I say, I keep going back to the record. And I understand there's an attachment to it. But, but respectfully, when it's private property and it hasn't been, I ask you, for your own recollection, have you ever imposed this historic label to property that has not been either on a, that the owner is not willing to do it? Or the, or the property has not been, been put on a, on a national or state list? I mean, it's.
We're not getting anywhere. You're going back and asking, we should look up records where the applicant made a big mistake. Should we add that to the record search? Come on.
Because you don't have.
We're, we're saying, it was a piece of property that had a cottage on it.
Right.
And a mistake was made, but you refused to use that same piece of property in another location.
Right.
And I still don't understand that logic.
If we came.
Because it's not more property, it's the same amount of property.
If the, if the mistake had not been made, we would still be standing here asking.
But a mistake was made, so let's not go into that. The question is, is a piece of property with a cottage on it? And Mr. Maitland suggested, take another piece of property, same size, no bigger?
No, no, I'm just saying that if you look at their site plan, there's a, there's a section of the property over there. Could you remove your, I just, yeah, thank you. To the west there, right, if you look at it, there is a placement there that you're not, I believe the drawings are just long.
No.
Yeah. Yeah.
But that's why, that's why I, that's why I put this up, because you can.
I can hear you, Mr. O'Handlon.
It's nowhere near the rear property line. Nowhere near.
This is the, this is the, this is West Putnam Avenue. This is the front property line.
Yes.
If you take that cottage, you've, you've got, you know, you've got ledge and a rising elevation, you would probably have to blast. You've got setback there. You've already said in one thing.
Blast, what are you talking about?
The front setback line.
What I think we're trying to suggest is, instead of creating a shadow structure that is a bunch of timbers, is to fill those timbers as an out, you call it an outdoor pavilion, where it's a place you can go have a cup of coffee out of the rain. It doesn't have to have.
Plumbing.
The plumbing and, and inside, we're trying to get the exterior of that structure to equal the bulk and the character of what was torn down. We're not saying, go build this apartment back into it and turn it into a conference room. We're saying, build a structure that looks like a structure from the street that you can utilize for your own as a place for your employees to go read a book out of the rain. That's, I believe, what you're, you're trying to communicate, that we're not saying, build the whole.
This is what you see from the street.
Right.
We don't, and that has to have.
Thank you for that, for that addition.
The.
Did you want to say something? Maybe we're getting somewhere. Hang in there, we've got to hang in. We have to hang in.
Yes. We've been trying to say the same thing over and over, so.
Yeah. You could cause it up. I'm going to do that.
Never had.
I've just been informed that what we would be prepared to do would be to do the.
Make it louder.
I think it's, it's Plan B that we propose, Study B, which is the metal ghost structure.
So what are you saying?
In other words, we do, we do not wish to rebuild the cottage down the, to the west. We will, we will put something substantially similar to what is shown in Number B there. Hmm? Option four.
But I wanted to add, should be.
I'm sorry, let me just skip my.
But that's what you showed us, Plan Option B.
Would that be?
Are you showing us what you showed us before?
Well, it's.
It's what you showed us before.
Is there the one that says an Option 4A or 4B?
Yep.
Okay.
And is that, sorry, is that in conjunction with the site plan Option B then as well?
Yes.
Yes.
And what we said to you.
Is that in conjunction with extending Site Plan B to include the arched opening?
You guys are tough on asking me questions.
And what we said to you is that we didn't like the lattice, the grid thing. I think that's what I heard people saying. Is that right, you guys?
You don't like the grill in there.
I think they said they didn't like, somebody said they didn't like the grill.
And we need a roof.
And everybody wants the roof line. And then that would be a compromise if you guys, and, and the archway, and then if you could do a roof line, the, I know you don't want to hear this, but more like the Ben Franklin House.
I mean, I don't understand why you can't actually.
Similar to.
Frame this on the outside to look like the building you tore down. Just frame it so that the shell on three sides, like your design here, I mean, why can't you do that? It's just a shell.
The idea is, we, we want, this is a south-facing, that's where all your sun comes from. We want to, to open up that yard again.
Just a frame. I'm happy with just the frame of the shape, similar to that concept in Philadelphia. Is that okay to say it like that?
Right. Well, that's what, you're saying something different. She's saying frame it, meaning fill it in. And I don't want to, we don't want to fill it in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying, yeah, common ground somewhere. I'll tell you what, would it be inappropriate to ask the HDC?
I think Mr. Bishop thought he said that he was, he thought that was okay.
I think.
Okay, so the ghost structure is okay with HDC?
I think, guys.
Not with HDC, but with Mr. Bishop had said something about it.
I'm not finished. You're finished.
Good.
I'm here if you want to talk to me.
Is it okay to ask Mr. ...
No, no, no.
Yeah.
This is the last...
Well, what, where are you now?
I'm having to talk to Mr. Bishop in here.
Pardon me, I can't hear you.
We're, we're prepared, again, as you've said, to put a roof line. We can lose the grill, the grill to include the archway.
The archway is far enough, I found it on the plan, that we could include the only...
Mr. Maitland told you, you could just believe him.
Well, and, and the only thing that it will affect is that now that telephone pole will be in the middle of the sidewalk again, because it, it is right next to that telephone pole. So it'll eliminate the...
But that would be an existing condition, wouldn't it though? Because that's where the, yeah, right, right. But the sidewalk could still come back to the corner though, so there would be an area around the corner where it would be set back, correct?
Yeah, it's just now it's sort of, it has a conflict with the... Sorry.
I'd like, before we get to that again, I, I still like, I'm still not satisfied with your answer, because I still don't understand it.
Okay.
What you're saying, what is your reason for not wanting to move it to the west corner? Give us a reason.
The reason is, one, because we haven't, one, I believe that there are site conditions that are going to make that impossible to do.
Impossible? In other words, engineering and architectural?
Engineering.
Engineering. Do you have an engineer here?
Uh, we do, but...
Can we speak to him?
David Ginter from Redniss and Mead is here.
Do you have your telephone?
Now's your chance to hit him. You, you know what to do with him. See if he's, if he's real or not. The engineer.
Accept it.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask, Ms. DeLuca, do you happen to have the GIS maps that, yeah, that could help?
Mr. Engineer, what is your name?
David Ginter from Redniss and Mead.
A comment was just made that there's all kinds of blasting or whatever. Did I, am I expressing that right?
Well, the concern is that there's significant ledge as you move to the west.
Oh, significant?
Ledge. So if you were going to reconstruct a building there, you'd have to blast to, to establish the foundation for it.
Okay, that's, we're talking about the corner on the west.
Correct, and we're, we're asking Ms. DeLuca to grab a copy of the GIS exhibit. Our topo survey does not show the topography over on the west corner, because it is all ledge and steeply sloping up, so we did not actually physically survey that. So we're going to GIS exhibit to show you where that is.
I'd just like to clarify this. I don't think anybody's asking you to blast out part of this outcropping. I think that there's a, before it actually does rise significantly, before you get to the corner, I, I seem to recall there is plenty of room there, which, which is not significantly elevated.
Peter, take a look at this.
You're gonna, now you're gonna opine.
Take a look at this.
We'll attempt to opine. All right, so I don't know if anybody has a copy of our drainage exemption report, but there is, in one of our drainage basin maps, does show where the topography does start to significantly slope up. Mr. Fox?
Would you mind looking for it?
Oh, that is fine.
What are the contours too, or...
I can't hear you, Mr. Fox.
The two-foot or one? They would be two-foot contours.
Turn on the mic or talk to me.
I'm not, I'm talking myself.
No, but you have to make sure that you talk to yourself on the record if you're saying it or not. All right, okay, everybody, so you come down here and look at the picture.
You could do it here. Just do it really there. Yeah. If you notice, this seems to be, this is where the structure is now. Maybe once you get towards the end of the wall here, it starts going up, that's why the wall stops. So at this point, you could do it.
This is flat in here. The question that I have for you...
Yes, sir.
Can you build a shed on this part of the property that we're discussing? It looks like this from the outside, is three-sided, and the other side is open completely.
Make that point again.
From my technical standpoint, sure, there is, there probably is some room in there to do it.
It is. Peter, Peter, tell him what you just said.
Confirming by looking at the contours on this topo map, the, the existing wall stops at a point when the grade starts increasing significantly. So sometime, someplace before that wall, that existing rubble wall stops, is where there seems to be adequate distance from the topography rising. So, to further the thought, you could move this building further to the west, close to the end of the wall.
Mr. Levy, let me just clarify, you're pointing to the end of our proposed wall?
No, the existing wall.
That would be over here.
Yeah.
Okay, the point you're pointing to on the, the map you have in front of you is farther east. I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, well, nonetheless, there's...
Without trying to position it for you right now.
I, I don't know if you're trying to be difficult, but it does seem quite obvious from looking at this that, in fact, there is, there is significant room to the west of the existing structure before the topography gets going steeply.
I'm Ann Campbell, I am a land use analyst with Robinson &amp; Cole. What I'd like Mr. Ginter to show Mr. Levy is, this is, this is from the drainage, the original drainage report. It does happen to have some more topo with it. And then I think if he could talk through with you where you're talking about, and he can show you the relationship of where the, the stone, the, the rock outcrop begins as, in relationship to the existing office building and the underground parking garage. That's a good frame of reference, because we do have that located on the other surveys. So David, if you could walk, you know, have Mr. Levy point that out to you.
No.
And then you can walk down and jump, so...
What is, what is the elevation right here?
Right in between our fingers was elevation 101, it appears.
Okay, and what is the sidewalk?
It's getting too small for me, hold on a second, please.
What?
You'd like to build the ghost and not rebuild the cottage?
You'd like to what?
Build the ghost structure, not rebuild the cottage.
101 is in this general area here, existing, and then out.
I'm sorry, what are you saying, this, this discussion is useless, right?
What difference, is that correct?
Uh, correct.
It would be correct.
Okay. Point, case in point, I think you just proved my point.
If I could clarify, because I've just talked to my client.
I wanted to say something, go ahead.
So at that point that we just discussed, there is no significant change in elevation.
Okay, I'm not sure what you've just discussed, but what I'd like to clarify is the client, is the applicant's position on this. We, the applicant is prepared to build the, the ghost structure in place with the, that we just referred to as 4A and 4B, adding a roof line, incorporating the arch...
Please, don't, don't, we, we got your message. What you made a statement is, I asked what's your reason for not going west? And you said blasting and da-da-da-da-da-da.
And I've just gotten a clarification that...
And we found that what you said is not correct.
Well, respectfully, Mr. Chairman, I have made it clear, I'm, that's my understanding. I have may not represented that this is a fact, but what I have clear, clarified with the applicant to, to, is that it is prepared to, to build that ghost structure that was submitted as 4A, and we're not prepared, does not, the applicant does not wish to, to build any facsimile of the cottage westerly of the, of the existing location.
So what you're saying, for no reason that you're willing to give us, you just say no?
Well, no, there's a reason, there's a, there's a reason, is that that's what the applicant wants to, wishes to use its property.
That's his reason, that's from our viewpoint, it's no explanation. You have no explanation, because what you said before is not true.
No, no. I'm, I'm sorry if you...
Mr. Levy turned up. So what you're saying, despite that, you're just saying no, period.
That's the clarification, right.
Okay, I understand.
I'd like to explore one more thing here on this 4A. If this is, as you say, the, the correct measurements of what was there, Mr. Maitland had the concept of a three-sided shed, which doesn't seek to have an interior. Is there, is it possible for you to reconstruct the appearance of the exterior of that building in that manner, where it is now?
No, we prepared to do the ghost, but not the, not the...
That's another, no, we won't do it.
That's another, no, we won't do it. We will do the ghost.
You're recalling that the, we had a representative from the HDC who came the last time and said, "It could be rebuilt," and I believe Mr. Graniff said, "It could be rebuilt." We are asking you only for a shell, and you're not prepared to do a shell.
Let me be clear, I'm not saying it can't. I'm saying that the applicant is prepared to build the ghost and not the shell, because it wants to preserve the light. That's the whole purpose of this, of the, it wants to recover the light and the air and the enjoyment of its property. I'm not making representations about whether it can, whether physically it can or cannot. It's, it's, the applicant is prepared to do that, that shell, but not the, not the shed.
This document you gave us, these two pages, so this is the, the rest of it. Why can't, I'm not understanding this loss of air when you're prepared to make this frame, so why not that side, that side, and the front side?
Because you're taking three-quarters of the light and air that we plan to recover through using the shell rather than the, the existing structure.
I think you're exaggerating the amount of light and air we're talking about here. There's not going to be a building, we're not asking for a reconstruct.
But if you're asking us to fill in that space, that's three...
Not the interior.
Three, I understand that, you're talking about a, you're talking about a wall. We don't want a wall there, we want the air and the light to move through there. That's a south-facing. One of the problems with that cottage is that it darkens the entire front yard, the only yard that the property has.
Okay, is anybody else, any other comments, people, for now?
No, you know where I am on this.
Anybody?
So, may I just...
Your last question was a good one.
Um, now...
Okay.
Just on...
Now...
We spent a lot of time talking about this, do we have any other, I'm sorry.
I got it already.
Into the mic.
Okay, into the mic. So there's some other staff comments and stuff like that, that, and there were other comments that ARC made. Do we have anything else that we want to raise with the applicant at this time?
No, I think, that's what I just said, we're all set. Except, does anybody from the public have anything else?
We're going to make 6152 comply.
Any other comments?
Donald, I have one.
Did you want to say something else?
Steve Bishop, I'm the chairman of the Historic District Commission. I, you know, we, I have five members here at this, at this hearing tonight, and we don't think that the metal structure is really going to do the job. I mean, I think it's going to look ridiculous, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I think a rebuilding, maybe down the, down the road a little bit, if that might be a great resolution for everybody, but...
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, we're in between a rock and a hard place on that, because the ARC actually liked that framework, that folly, so, you know, there it is, just, okay.
I'm not so sure about that.
That's not...
Well, they voted six in favor.
Do you have any final comments? Did you have any final comments?
The, just to make it, the ARC voted, asked us to study it, I'm not sure they've seen that, those, those drawings.
The committee voted and approved six in favor and one opposed to require the applicant to provide a folly or framework of stone and steel.
It was to provide a study, though, not to provide the folly. They wanted us to come back and show them the study of it.
Okay, that's not what my document says.
Okay, that's definitely what they said in person.
My document just says that they voted for...
Well, they haven't approved in concert.
No, they have to come back, the applicant has to go back to ARC regardless.
You finished, Mr. O'Hanlon?
Because they still want to see the stone, the color. There's a lot of open items still with ARC. So that's really, of all the issues that are open, it basically seems to me like it's ARC and they do have to go back there, unless you want to make a comment at this time on the remaining issues.
Yeah, just to finish on a little bit more positive note, I mean, this, this application is intended to bring the property up to date, to improve it, to allow it to, and it is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood, and we ask that you...
Okay, guys, do we close?
Don, I have one more, I have a correction there. The August 28 report that was provided by the applicant on the history, it states that there is a 1900 Atlas, which I believe speaks to a wall and a structure. And then your report says that couldn't have been when it was built, but I believe that is an accurate reflection of when it was built. You make a conclusory statement, you have absolutely nothing in that report other than that conclusory statement.
You haven't read our full report, ma'am. You haven't read it, because we, we addressed every one of those things, and we acknowledge that there very likely, first, the road was in a different place, there very likely was an earlier structure, but that structure, and it's a cross-referencing of the land records with the, the other town records, is that structure was not built until at least 1914 or 1915. I urge you to read that again, because we very carefully did...
I read it word for word.
Well, you're misrepresenting part of it.
I've read the land records. The land records are not dispositive.
Land records aren't, we also... Did you read the assessor's records? Did you go to the, to the town, to the other town records that we referenced in there?
Yes, you did.
Because when you cross-reference every one of those, that's where you reach that conclusion.
I, I want to state for the record that I do not agree and do not believe that conclusory statement is accurate. I believe the structure was built by 1900, and I also would like to reference another property which was built in 1900, which looks almost identical from the road, which is 668 Lake Avenue.
At 10 o'clock at the hearing, there's no way I could...
You are not going to stop me, thank you. 668 Lake Avenue contains a cottage built in 1900 from the assessor's office, which looks like a garrison colonial on the outside built into the wall. It's exactly the same period and theme of architecture. So I believe this building was built in 1900, and I do not believe that report says anything but a conclusory statement to the contrary.
Well, waiting until I've made my final comments, there's nothing I can say about that to disagree.
Just one point, you said that it was built in 1915?
15, right. If you look at our...
And your point is that's not historic?
No, it's not his...
It's 100 years old.
It was, the original structure was built in 1915. If you look at the other information we submitted, it was, it was rebuilt in the 1970s. The floor was raised, a concrete foundation was poured. You can look at that structure and see that that's built to modern standard. You can see the chimney as a 1970s structure.
I understand all of that, but the, the fact is that the, the genesis of it was 1915.
What does genesis mean? It's, it's a, it's a rebuilt stru, I mean, if every, if you went that way, you're not, you don't have any standard that you're operating.
Please, we're not going to argue...
Your demolition application says 1900.
We're not going to argue with you what definitions are of that.
Yeah, you put 1900 on that.
Oh, it's in the record that...
The applicant did as an abundance of caution, but we, we did that study after that.
I think, I think it's time now, is it, everybody agree we close? Will everybody agree we close? Okay, we're closed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We're going to take a 10-minute break.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is number five on your agenda, 151 Grant Avenue. With me tonight is the principal in Plushblow, which is a personal service establishment, Kristi Motande, and also Tom Torelli, who's the building owner's representative and a commercial real estate broker in Grant. This, this property is, as I said, located 151 Grant Avenue. In 1986, it received a building permit to put a third-story addition on the building, and that incorporated some residential, two residential units, as well as a commercial space. And I think you looked at yesterday, your briefing session submission. Basically, this is the two residential units in the back of the building and the front of the unit. And then in the middle of it is this area that was Use Group One designation back in 1986 and approved at that time. What you see here is actually the area that, as it was approved in 1986, and then the area as it exists today, the walls were constructed prior to my client's purchasing the building. Plushblow, so Motande is intending to move into the front unit here and run her establishment there, and then we have two more rental units to the rear. The issue is whether or not this requires a special permit, and I submit to you that I, though I confused myself in the middle of this application a bit as to that point, I've come around again to believe quite strongly that the only way to read this building properly in the application is that it doesn't require a special permit, that what was, in fact, grandfathered by the change to the regulation in 1995, which prior to that, Use Group One was permitted on the third floor, as was Use Group Three. And in 1995, Use Group One was excluded from third floor in the zone. And so I submit to you that what is actually grandfathered is the use on the third floor of Use Group One. And that as long as we stay within that use group, which the proposal is for a personal establishment, that we don't need a special permit, because we're not either expanding a non-conforming use or changing by going to a different use group. not either expanding a non-conforming use or changing by going to a different use group. And I think that's the proper reading of the regulation as it was intended and as it's written. In addition, as far as changing the uses even within the use group and the effect it might have on parking, this building is between the front and rear building lines on Grant Avenue. It's under 15,000 square feet. As such, there's no parking requirement, and so it doesn't really matter what use is within that use group, even if that was a concern, I don't think it is, but as to its impact on parking, it's irrelevant under that use group and under the grandfathering which took effect in 1995. Tom Torelli will testify, if you wish him to, that there have been use group one uses in this location for as long as he can recall, prior to 1995, in fact, and that's been continuous. So there's been no let-up or waiver of that use group one used on the third floor. In addition, as far as dividing up the space into three units, which again was done previously to the current owners owning the property, there's no prohibition within your regulations in doing that. They're non-structural walls, it's really just devising walls, and for that reason, I think that even the site plan approval is not necessary, but the very least, no special permit is necessary, the use is grandfathered as use group one. Questions in that regard?
Mr. Mateen, do you have anything here?
No, but you are requesting a change in the, but you're saying the change you're requesting from one office space to two is within, does not require a special permit?
That's correct. Because I'm not, if I were moving out of the use group, if I was going from use group one to a different use group, that I could see would be a consideration for special permit and what the impact would be, whether there's a greater nonconformity than the previous uses, or if I were expanding out into the residential sections, which I don't think would even be permitted, but you would be expanding a nonconforming use.
So you're modifying your application to us?
Correct.
Is that permitted?
Before he does that, I think.
No, but I just want to know.
I want to have a dialogue with him because he may wish she had.
When I first started, when I first put in this application, actually, when I first told the staff, it was my opinion that no special permit was needed, and I wasn't quite sure that site plan was needed either, I still don't think it is, but, and I changed my mind, I got myself kind of tied up in a knot over this thing, and in the middle of it.
You do, of the nonconforming uses.
It is, and I did, and I kind of got myself all caught up, and when I came to make my presentation to you, the last time or the time before, I was having a tough time having it make logical sense, and it occurred to me that I had to go back to my original thought pattern, and that was the correct interpretation, and that was the only logical interpretation.
So, let me address that with you. So, 141 says a change of use. It doesn't say a change of the use group. And it's my understanding that when you have a legally nonconforming use, you don't go from that use to the whole use group, and that's to stretch what you had. Your, I believe it was '86, the approval you got in '86.
Correct.
Says retail, retail. It doesn't say use group one. And it was used as retail space, and that's what I think you have as a nonconforming use. I don't think that's terribly important, but there is a process and we have a record. So I just want you to know that I think it needs to be that precise. So if we were to approve a change of use, it would be a change of use to a personal, to exactly what it is, personal service.
I, I'm, yes.
It's not going to be legally nonconforming anything in use group one, of which there are 15 or 10 or whatever.
I, no, I think.
Putting, okay, do you follow?
Yeah, I do, I follow, and I think that's, attorney, remember, I think that's where I got confused myself at one point, too, where I got caught up in the uses within the use group.
So if we were to approve a change of, from one nonconforming use to another, and to specify that it's a personal service use.
Right.
Do you have any problem with that result?
I do.
Okay, tell us what it is.
Because I think it's the incorrect result. I mean, for my client, particularly Kristi, who wants to operate her salon there, obviously she wants to operate the salon. As far as the regulations are interpreted, however, first of all, with regard to the designation of the retail on those two units initially, at the time that this application came in, and up until pretty recently, it was par for the course for building permit applications to go in and designate retail for use group one uses, generally speaking. So I think that's always done that. As far as what was grandfathered here, it's not that the use that was existence at the time that the 1995 regulation went into effect was the grandfathered use. So say, for instance, if the time, if it was a jewelry store at that time, that that's the grandfathered use, and then anything that came in after that was a change in use which required a special permit. What was grandfathered by the change in the regulations in 1995 was the use group. So the ability to use the third floor for use group one, that's what I believe was grandfathered, not any specific use at that time, which would require it to keep coming back.
Mr. Haslam, when you read the cases on legally, you know, on legally nonconforming uses, on uses that were illegal, it is always, you know, it's the factory, it's the deli, it's the whatever it is, it's the function it has, not a use group. I mean, that's what, they're all specific to a use.
I think those are the more typical situations where you have.
I think she's right because there's such a big, like.
It is the same use group, but it's a different use within that group. I mean, Katie, what are your thoughts? I mean, I think that she's right, and I don't see it as a difficulty from a regulatory point of view, because, put it this way, if there was a parking requirement, it would be, it could be a pretty big difference.
Right.
It'd be like saying you have an emergency use shelter and you want to go to an indoor theater.
There you go.
They're both in use group one, but vastly different.
Vastly different, and as, and just to take your, the philosophical issue a step further, what we've been thinking about is that uses should be kind of in terms of ITE, of trips generated more, and that would, that means that, okay, so personal service is in a group because it tends to generate a certain amount of traffic. So where you're requiring parking, it would make a difference, it would be, because you've got to make that judgment on the greater nonconformity. In your case, since there's no parking impact, it doesn't create a greater nonconformity.
Of that particular type.
I think that's.
Not only of that particular type.
But in general, to Nancy's point, you would be saying it create, it would give you the ability to decide on the nonconformity. So I think we're, I think we respectfully disagree.
I mean, Mr. Haslam.
We're okay with it.
I understand it's a policy decision why you would want to go in that direction, and I understand, I think, too, that with regard to this particular application and others similar to it on Grant Avenue where no parking is of issue, that you're more inclined to say, well, you know what, you're changing uses, but you're still within use group one, there's no parking requirement that changes, so therefore we're inclined to grant it, but we want to see it, because there should, can be some uses possibly out there that are so dramatic within the use group that we feel we should have some jurisdiction over that. And I totally understand that as a policy. Legally speaking, though, I do think that what was grandfathered here was use group one, because that's what was changed in 95. It was saying that no longer are we going to allow use group one on the third floor on Grant Avenue in the zone. Basically, that's what changed. And so what is, in fact, grandfathered is not the use at that time, which you're comparing to, but rather the entirety of the use group. I believe that's the law. But I understand your policy.
Okay.
Could you explain a little bit more the, the statement in your letter, which says that the, that there is another salon in the building, that this is going to be an appendage to, or.
Well, it's a separate business, but as Kristi has explained to me, she has very little profile on Grant Avenue, she's up, obviously, retail on the third floor is difficult as it is. The day spa is right, conforming, legally conforming day spa right below her on the second floor is a big traffic generator for her, so a lot of people that go to that spa will then go up to her salon, and she, I think you said, Kristi, it's about 70% of the people that.
I misread your letter, I thought that they were the same business.
No, no, it's a separate business, correct.
So separate business that she expects to draw, 70% of her clientele from the spa.
Exactly. She was drawing, she had actually opened and, but it became a permit issue, which brought this all to the fore. So it was her experience when she was open that she was getting 70%. Kristi, how long were you open for?
A few weeks.
A few weeks.
You were inside running a spa.
But she was inside previous to that, renting a space from day spa, so that's what letter ran out.
Mr. Haslam, we had obtained information in our briefing yesterday that there was, I think, another facility in Rye, perhaps it is.
Correct.
And another franchise, I suppose. So, and that the appointments booked are 30-minute appointments, and there are four chairs, so is that a, is that a correct?
Those are my location, yes.
Kristi, why don't you come up?
Yeah.
Just to get the details on how this compares to retail.
Okay, Kristi, could you just tell the commission a little bit about your project?
We'd just like to understand how the business works.
Sure, so it's an express service.
Why don't you state your name first?
All right, I'm Kristi Rotondi.
You can pull that down if you're listening.
It's R-O-T-O-N-D-E.
O-N-D-E, as in dog?
Yes. So we're express service, we'll do anywhere from 30 to 60 minutes is how we book, and we do anywhere from eight to 10, 10 clients per chair, per day. So the clients really come.
Eight to 10 per day?
Mm-hmm.
And that's steady?
I mean, really depends on the day, but I would say an average, yeah.
Six days a week?
Seven days a week.
I'm so sorry, seven days a week?
Correct, seven days a week.
Okay. So the concern, I guess, is what is this for the residential tenants on that floor, and is it a greater impact on them than what's there now? I mean, that's the detriment, that's the test in 141.
I mean, for us, the business in Greenwich will be a little bit different because there is a spa underneath us, so we do have to maintain quiet, so we probably will be booking on the 45 minutes to the 90 minutes there, just have, maintain a little bit more of a service. So it will be different in that location because the spa's doing massages and stuff like that, and we really don't want a lot of noise. You know, we have a very good relationship with the spa, and we don't want to get them upset because the client that's going to them is also coming to us. So we want them to have the full experience of that. So like I said, it really is 70% of the customers that they're doing, they're going to get manicure, pedicures, they're going to come up, it's going to be more of a relaxing service, especially that we're on the third floor, they're spending much more time there, rather than I have a street presence in Rye, 30 minutes, they want to be in and out, they're picking up their kids.
I was candidly astonished it takes 30 minutes to blow somebody's.
Yeah, we train the girls to do that.
So.
What time do you close?
Well, we're open nine to seven in all the locations, but in Greenwich, it would probably, we would probably do the same hours that the spa does.
And what's the spa hours?
Their spa hours are anywhere from nine o'clock to three, some days a week, and some are nine to six.
Okay.
And they have an occasional Sundays that are open, so we pretty much have the same schedule.
So you wouldn't be open every Sunday?
I think it's more seasonal, just because that's when the spas close, but not every Sunday, I'd say maybe, like, for the holidays, of course, but in the summertime, it's really not necessary.
Anything else, guys? Anything else? Anything from the public? Should we close?
I had one question, what was the previous retail? I know I knew this originally.
I did have that down, too.
I knew it.
There was a salon there.
Store's right here.
Yes, Tom, who was the immediately, why don't you come up?
She actually still works at the spa downstairs, the girl that works at the studio.
Tom Torelli.
Tom Torelli, T-O-R-E-L-L-I. The, the current owner purchased the property in 2000, late 2000, I think, 2002? Was it say 2001?
That's what our report says, doesn't it?
And at the time, there was a hair salon called The Studio. There was a, you'd call it a, it was, it's a, by appointment-only jewelry store, and there was a fellow who sold, he was a personal service, he installed very, very high-end security systems for homes.
Yeah, that I remembered.
Yeah, and those are the three tenants up there at the time, and then the security tenants switched over to a caterer. Because it's third floor, they're the type of businesses that.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, shall we close?
Katie, Katie has a question. Quick question, so in, under the 1986 regs, just back to that argument that the regulation change was about what could happen on that third floor, and so the argument is that you were permitted to have use group one on the third floor in '86, you're not permitted to have it now.
Correct.
So in '86, if you had a nonconforming use, do you, I mean, did, when you, how do you phrase this? If this applic, if we were in 1986 and you were coming before us, would you be making the same argument? In other words, because the change is still happening, it's still going from retail to a different use, even though it's in the same use group, do you think that that was how things were done back in '86? Are you arguing that point also?
Well, it's interesting, because I think whoever, other land use attorneys that are here, Tom, I think is still here, would verify, is that, and I started doing this work in '86, '87, is that until very recently, you could switch use groups without really having to come before the commission. It was considered to be, you know, relatively flexible unless you did have issues like parking, where you were switching within a use group, and the parking requirement was such that you were going to make yourself nonconforming, or make yourself more nonconforming than you already would be. But other than that, you could switch use groups pretty easily, and it was, did not require site plan approval by the plans under commission, that was my experience, and as I said, I think Tom would probably back me up on that. So that was, that was basically the standard. And I really do think that in this particular case, what was grandfathered is the ability to use the third floor for use group one, that's what's grandfathered. And I think that's the case pretty much along the avenue where this has been done in the past, too. But again, I do understand your policy and why you're looking at what the impact is going to be.
I hear it, I mean, I hear what he's saying, it's a.
Well, you can look at it in two different ways, and I think that your argument is that you were approved under a site plan that was, under the effect in 1986 or '85, that you got to switch within that use group. In reading section 6141, which is where we are kind of hanging this on, it does state that a nonconforming building, wait, where am I at? Sorry. Nonconforming building lottery use, or the building in which a nonconforming use occurs, may be changed to another nonconforming use, again, talking.
As long as it's not more detriment, yeah.
Not use groups, only if the application, yeah, blah, blah.
Well, that's what Nancy's point is, it doesn't say use group.
It doesn't say use group, and, you know, we happen to have regulations that are in effect in order to deal with these situations, and I, you know, I think that, you know, if your argument is that it was approved under a certain site plan, and now the site plan is grandfathered, I don't necessarily think that that's necessarily true, especially since we do have regulations in effect that are able to work with that and deal with it, but that's my opinion. We disagree, but. So I think that the special permit's required.
Okay, we'll close, thank you.
Thank you.
Next items on the agenda, item number seven, which is 19 East Elm rezoning, and then item number eight, which is the final site plan, special permit. I will recuse myself.
So he's keeping it.
Because I'm friends with the owner.
Okay, so 19 East Elm.
Went away, right?
Technically, they have provided a letter saying, please open our application, and we would just like a continuance until the 24th, and please schedule us then. They are not here to present an application, they are not even here tonight, they would just like it to be opened. No extension has been provided, just to simply open it, and then we'll have the 35 days to close.
Okay.
Mr. Heller, Mr. Heller.
Mr. Heller, you can come back. Just a second.
Some sort of magic words, like we are opening the, we're opening the applications seven and eight, and there'll be no testimony taken this evening.
At the request of the applicant.
Thank you.
At the request of the applicant? Did you get that? Okay.
She said it. It's on the record. I said you're going to walk out and walk in.
Okay. Now, we have final site plan and special permit, 80 Millbank.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. This is a parcel on the west side of Millbank Avenue. It currently has a two-family house on it and a driveway to one parking space in the rear of the site. It's a three-story building currently, and we are proposing to remove the existing two-family house and construct a new two-family house that meets all the setbacks, it meets coverage requirements, FAR, and height. We are showing three parking spaces, two in the building, one on the south side of the property, and then two in front of the garages. And I have a rendering of the... Have a rendering of the building, which shows how the parking would be arranged. You have the two garages, you have two cars in front, and you have the fifth car on the south side. When we were looking at this property initially and analyzing how it could be developed, and looking at other properties in the R6 zone, our feeling was that the way people actually use their parking areas and their driveway is to park behind the garage. And that because that's the practical use of the area, that it would be better to not overpark and over-coverage the lot, and to use that as it is in practice used. So, we believe that we are meeting the requirement of having five parking spaces for two, three-plus unit, bedroom units. And we are allowing for greater open, not open space, but green space in order to utilize the pavement that's already there as part of the garages and the turnaround areas.
As you know, many of the two-family dwellings in the R6 zone that you're referring to were built prior to the two-family becoming a special permit.
That's true.
To be under the review. And one of the things that we have done with projects like this is we have not permitted tandem parking. And therefore, I don't think the tandem parking satisfies the requirements as I read the regulations for a parking space. That's number one. Number two, the difficulty of having the spaces being utilized, all five spaces being utilized, is getting your car out of the garage. You've got to move, I mean, the traffic movements to do that. Where do you take the car that you have to replace to get out of the garage? There's no place to put it. You can't circulate. So, I have a real problem with the layout of this. And then the last thing I have for you is the, is the width of the driveway coming in. As I understand it, isn't, doesn't DPW require 16 feet on the width of that driveway?
No, no. That would be part of the development of two lots on a, on rear, two parcels on rear lots. The regulation there requires that it's 16 feet. But that has not been the case for any of these two families that have been reviewed.
Okay, well, I'd like to just have you look at the section 103.09, DPW roadway manual. They ask for 16 feet on a two-family dwelling. And I think if you have two rear lots side to side, it then would require you to have a 16-foot driveway into the, in the combined accessway.
Part of what goes on in these tight zones, in the R6 zone, particularly, not so much necessarily Millbank Avenue, but when you get into Chickahominy and Byram, the changes that have occurred since 2010, when the commission required site plans and special permits on this, has had extremely detrimental impact on those properties. We're looking at more pavement. We're looking at greater application details. And for many cases, not necessarily here, but in the rest of the R6 zone, this is, has severely impacted the utilization of people's property and their values. And frankly, I think the R6 zone is something that the commission needs to relook at to see whether what they're doing is appropriate or warranted. I think it's, 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 it's almost an assault on the zone that has occurred.
Katie, you want to make a statement about that?
That was an issue that was raised in the 2009 plan of conservation and development.
It is an action item, and we do have monies budgeted actually already. And we are going out with the RFP momentarily, actually, on a full R6 study that will review all of the issues that you're raising. As you know, the R6 encompasses a wide variety of areas in town, starting from Cosco, heading to the western side of town, significant number of properties in town. It's a diverse zone. It's a, it's, there's a lot of traditional development patterns. There's a lot of historic homes in that area. And as a result, the one-size-fits-all zoning has resulted in a lot of variation across the zone. And in some areas, we hear the comments that you're giving to us now, that it's time-y's development. And in other areas, we hear that the regulations are far too, far too flexible, and they're ruining the existing neighborhoods. So, we're hearing both sides of the argument, and we are, I can assure you, we're about to embark on a very comprehensive and detailed study to try to address it.
And I think that really is warranted. I think that the R6 zone in particular, in the last, particularly in the last five years, has been severely impacted in a negative way. And I don't think that that's what the commission had in mind when they were developing the various changes that have occurred since 2010 to now.
But there's been objection as well from the community about two-family houses that have some of the impact. And we haven't talked about the streetscape yet here, but there, we have heard, contrary to what you're stating, that people have problems with this type of development. So...
Well, the R6 zone, whether it requires a special permit now or had in the past...
If I could have just, just let me finish my sentence that...
Sorry.
So that, in fact, that there are people who are telling us that the regulations we have in place are not as strict as they need to be. Now, coming back to Mr. Maitland's question, you sidestep to talk about philosophically where the regulations are, but you want to go back to the 16-foot driveway specifically?
I think that a 10-foot driveway here is more than adequate to serve two units. I have a driveway that serves three houses, and it works just fine. I don't see why we would want to increase the amount of pavement here to, to serve what amounts to two dwelling units. It just doesn't seem to make any sense to me.
Number one, that was just a question whether you're complying with that regulation or not. And, I mean, right now, you don't have a 16-foot driveway.
No, our driveway is 10 feet.
Right.
Which we are proposing is appropriate, and we think is appropriate.
But the last one is, I don't see how you put five cars on this site and then get the car out of the garage, which is in your easterly, or your westerly unit. No circulation space behind the car.
So, if we're taking this car out from here to get the car that's in the garage out, I do see your point on that. And I think that we can look at how the circulation can be redone. But I think that is a valid consideration.
Good for you.
You don't win them all.
You do as well as your son did before now.
Yeah.
So, I'm learning.
He's in training.
You know, there was, I wanted to go over a couple of the comments from zoning enforcement. First was that the actual grade plane and, and the grade plane shown on the elevations was different. That's true. The grade plane shown on the elevation is, is 117.9, and the grade plane analysis by Mr. DeAndrea is 118, which actually means that on the architectural plans, we were showing the grade plane is lower than what Mr. DeAndrea actually found it to be, which is a tenth of a foot higher. Certainly something we can address very easily. The second was showing number of parking spaces on the plans. That's what we've been just discussing, and we will come back to you with a solution on that. And they want, whether there should be a note if the attic is trust and provides sections. We did not provide the section showing the trusses, but all the attic areas will be trust. The dormers on the front and side are merely decorative, and the whole attic is, is proposed as trust. And we'll provide a sheet from the architectural plans that shows the whole attic being trust.
The... DPW also had to resubmit on this one?
Yes, I went over that with Mr. DeAndrea. Actually, on this plan here, I should add, we filed this on September 11th. We got the comments from Mr. Marucci on Thursday of last week. Mr. DeAndrea reviewed them.
He's just like an attorney, waits till the last minute before he does anything.
Are you speaking of Mr. Marucci?
No, you know, some of the attorneys, not even the last minute, they get stuck in board meetings.
Late-night humor.
I've already apologized to Chip for not, for making him late and having to sit here for two more hours after he could have gone home. We're showing cultech units in the rear, which would satisfy Mr. Marucci's issues. And Mr. DeAndrea will meet with him, his appointed time on Wednesday.
Okay.
If we'd gotten it on Tuesday, we could have resolved this on Wednesday. But I understand that that's an issue that we need to address and resolve. There was also comments from sewer. We're showing one sewer lateral.
I want you to have two.
And he wants us to have two. And I believe Mr. DeAndrea has shown two on this revised plan.
But then you come back to the parking.
And that's something that certainly I think we need to show, that you can maneuver on-site, whether we have the tandem spaces or not, to be able to pull out onto the street. And I think that's something we need to be studying.
What we were really talking about as well was the garage versus the outdoor. Because this, you know, it's a pretty, they're pretty big units, and they only have one garage space, where our requirement would be two per unit.
No.
Two garages?
Two garages.
No.
No. It's only one garage space per unit.
Per unit.
Regardless of whether it's two units or 200 units. There was a question on a landscape plan, which we had not submitted earlier.
Yeah, got it.
And...
The landscape plan?
We have paired from Craig Studer's office, a landscape plan showing landscaping along the front and around the perimeter in the rear. And we would have our air conditioning units in this area here so that they meet the five-foot setback on that side of the property.
On the landscape plan by inference, the conservation comments are that you consider adding more permeable surfaces?
Well, I think that's sort of dovetailed in with what was in the engineering comments.
Yeah, replacing...
And I think Mr. DeAndrea has addressed that.
Nobody's really liking the patios.
Well, the patio areas, this is shown as 18-inch, or, excuse me, 30-inch square stepping stones with lawn in between. So...
Okay.
It is meant to be permeable because the lawn is separating each of the stones.
She specifically says patios, but now that I'm thinking about it, she had not seen...
She had not seen this.
Okay.
She did not see this. We'll have the opportunity to review with her.
So, once she sees this, she'll be okay with it?
We are hopeful that that is, in fact, the case.
All right.
Could you just tell me how a person walks to the rear unit?
I mean, I'm sorry.
Where does a person walk to get to the rear unit? Do they come in that stairway adjacent to the road and then walk up?
Yes, they would come up these stairs, along this patio, and then enter.
And go up.
The front door is here. Well, you're at elevation 118 here.
It showed through.
118.7. There's one step there. There are a couple of steps here. Because we're starting at elevation 111.5 here, we're going to 118.7 there.
Even with the tandem spaces, not a very... It is not. Not a terribly graceful way to enter that rear unit. But maybe you'll come up with something different. Maybe you think it's fine.
Calling it not graceful is a good way of putting it.
I understand the issue on the parking. We will, we'll review that. We'll also discuss with engineering the width of the driveways, see if they are in agreement with us that this is appropriate at 10 feet.
We had a staff comment on the streetscape aspect of this, proposing that you consider adding a porch.
Mr. Hammer, I think, looking at the site plan.
Yeah.
I think actually your renderings are actually, let the cat out of the bag. I think that rendering in the upper left-hand corner really shows what's going to happen in the front yard. You have two retaining walls. I know there's one out there now that's probably not even 18 inches tall. So, the facade of the existing house is more on the street. You've got single-family residences to the left and right of a similar scale. And then we have the new proposal, which is significantly higher, behind retaining walls, that's showing its side to the street as opposed to a, a street facade. And then looking at the DeAndrea plan, I guess we're hiding two cultechs in that area. And we're going from, if I understand this right, 111 at the sidewalk to 118 at the top. To me, that's a significant...
That's true.
That's a significant step up from the street.
Well, the elevation of the first floor of the current house is 123.
Yes.
So, it's three feet higher than what we're showing is the first elevation, the first floor elevation.
Matter of fact, looking at the street view here, there is a porch on that, that one, on the existing house. Very nice porch. So, what I'm troubled with is that, that... This, this application, okay, I think we'll now start a tumbling effect that we're seeing down the street, where we have development that's going to now start destroying the streetscape in this particular, this particular block, and maybe even farther down the street. I think my fellow members in the commission here probably are concerned about that. And, you know, is there any way that we can turn this around? Is there, can we put the street, streetscape back? Can we put the cultechs in the back of the property in the area that you're regrading? I think there's, the thought's got to go into this, just specifically for this thing, of that you're turning sideways on the street, and you're, you're destroying the streetscape, which is actually important to us.
Well, you have a long, narrow lot. It's 60 feet wide. There is a similar-type property three doors up at the corner of Lenox and, and Millbank. And frankly, it has the whole side on Millbank screened. It has two retaining walls, and it has a patio on the Millbank side of the house. It's a brick building where you enter from the side. In this case, it would be off the driveway. In that case, it's off of Lenox Avenue.
On the corner of Lenox Avenue.
Right.
Okay, near the building.
And this is not dissimilar to that in its design and orientation.
But this one's actually set in between two existing homes. The one on Lenox is actually on the corner.
It's on the corner.
So, it has a street facade on Lenox that faces the street. It has a face to the street.
That's correct. But it's essentially the same design and layout that we have here.
Right.
And they have had to build retaining walls along Millbank Avenue at, actually, And they have had to build retaining walls along Millbank Avenue at actually a higher elevation than what we have here based on walking past it the other day.
And now looking at the plan, actually, the landscape plan, so we have the retaining walls and then we'll have the landscaping on top, so we're actually even, we're going to hide the whole thing. So as we go up, I've got nice houses and then this, this tree-lined retaining walls. But I'm also seeing here on the, the existing plan is that the front facade of the new building, the front facade of the existing building are almost in the same place.
Yes. They are.
That's, that's true.
Okay. Was it explored whether you actually could keep the existing facade or keep the front building, a portion of it, and then do additions to it to add the second unit in the back?
You have essentially a three-story building now that is antiquated in terms of its layout, probably has significant fire code issues associated with it.
Oh, I don't imagine.
Uh, that, we did not believe that adding on to this, the way we did on, building on Millbank Avenue, 111, uh, excuse me, 111 Mason Street, which did work, did not work here. And that was something that Nick Arpaia, who was the architect on 111 Mason Street, was able to make that happen there. That was not something that was feasible here.
What about just giving it look more like...
I'm concerned...
It's a streetscape issue at 617, we're within our rights.
But what become the standards for that? Do we not have any landscaping so we can see the porch? Or do we put landscaping in to hide a retaining wall? Can we have a parking space in the front? Can we, do we have to have a particular kind of porch? Here we have two French doors with a trellis above them. Is that not something that's acceptable as a, as a front facade? Why does it have to be a certain type of porch?
Because what, it's the continuity with the surrounding neighborhood that you're looking for and the preservation of the character that you're looking for within the special permit considerations.
We don't have contextual zoning in town, though. That's not a way we approach our development.
I appreciate that, Mr. Hegney, but that, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about what 617 has. I know I don't need to read it to you. Would you like me to?
No, thank you.
Okay. I think that's what we're struggling with. I think that's where Mr. McRae was going with the preservation of the, of the existing set. It's just the streetscape side of it relative to the surrounding buildings. It's inconsistent. And, uh, Millbank Avenue is a highly visible area. I know maybe not as much in this section, but... So, Mr. McRae, what would you...
Well, we have Plutnam Park across the street along with a portion of the Julian Curtis School property.
Mr. McRae, where would you, if since preservation is...
Which house is it?
Here, can I pass that? Pass that down, return. It's the middle one.
The middle one, yes.
I mean, this hearkens to the course we went to on form-based...
But we're not talking about form-based...
No, but, you know, Mr. Hegney, you know, there, there are lots of places where everybody gets to put a front porch on because they're trying to preserve a neighborhood and that's what we're, we're talking about.
And under our regulations, we can just do under 617. And, I mean, at the, that's all we can ask at this point. And so where would you take it from there, Mr. McRae, given his answer?
Actually, can you put up a drawing, A 202? So that lower elevation is the street facade and it's seven feet above the street. Yes, the existing house is above the street. But as I see that, in terms of the context of what's there and what's existing on the street adjacent to it, I'm seeing a side of the building. I'm not seeing a, a pronounced covered porch or a stair up or anything like that. And I think my, my concern is that we're setting up a kind of a precedent here for this to be happening and we'll start to lose more of the properties to these sideways-facing buildings. And what I'd like to know or like to see is some effort into looking at this elevation to give it a better street facade, something that's more akin to what the existing is out there now. I know when you go to the ARC, the ARC will say the same thing.
But they're not going...
The ARC has, I think, made it clear they don't want to see one and two family houses. Three family and more is enough for their agendas. I, I want to address this in terms of some of the other development that's occurring on Millbank Avenue because I don't think that, the fear that this is going to cascade down and lose the, the porches is really correct. I just did one at 151 Millbank where we had a front porch. The others that we've done on the corner of Lewis and Millbank, that has a front porch. There were, there are condos on the north corner of Lewis and Church which have no street presence whatsoever toward Millbank. And that has not carried through to the other developments. The ones that have been done on, on the corner, on the north corner of Millbank and East Elm, they have a front porch. And there have been quite a few farther south, and I think it's partly because the lots are a little wider and don't, and aren't as narrow as the 60-foot wide lot. And I think it's also because of how the land slopes. In those particular properties, the land slopes down on the, on the west side of Millbank. In this particular section of Millbank, it slopes up. And I think what you're going to see is if the land is flat or slopes down, you're going to get those front porches. And if you have a narrow lot and the land slopes up in the back, you're going to have more of this type of design. And, and that's why I think that's what you see at the corner of Lennox and Millbank also.
I think where I'm coming from on this is what I'm seeing from East Elm North on the west side where we have a series of, of developments where we have retaining walls at the street. We have lost large homes there that are, large stately homes. And it seems to be moving up towards the cemetery.
On the, on the east side of Millbank?
On the east side of Millbank.
Because I think if you look at the ones that are occurring on, on the west side of Millbank?
Oh, yes, I've seen the ones.
Coming north, I think those are, are what you're looking for, but...
I agree.
Again, you have a lot that's sloping down. You have the ability to park underneath and take advantage of that, the topography of the site and the grade plane differential. And you have lots that are wider.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I think that that, more than anything dictates how you're going to be developing the lot. And I, that's why I don't think that this becomes the template for further development farther south on Millbank.
But I think it sets the precedent.
Yeah, but those could be famous last words. Our mandate is to consider community, consider the characteristics, the intrinsic characteristics of the neighborhood and to preserve those. It isn't to decide what, what's going to happen down the road. That's not what 617 says. It's to consider the impact and not changing it. So, um, so what would you have, what would your suggestions be?
My suggestion to me, I'm actually very appreciative of, of the design team. You know, they've put this together on this very narrow lot. Everything seems to work in terms of the requirements, the regulations. I think a little bit more effort needs to be put into looking at the street facade and what can be done to enhance it in context to what's out there now and the street facade that's, the street facades that are out there now and the streetscape. I think it would, it would fit in better, I think it would actually be a better situation for the property developer as well because then he's being a kind neighbor and it'll fit in. It's not going to stick out like a sore thumb. You're going to have these two other properties, maybe they get developed, but right now is when that, when that goes in, it's going to really stick out. And maybe if you, a little bit of effort to see what we could do with that front facade would be most appreciated.
Mr. Hegney, could you just...
We'll, we'll take a look at it.
Could you just go over the landscaping of the front of the building there?
Do you have this? Do you have it?
I don't have it in front of me.
I brought it in our packet tonight. If this came, if somebody could give it to Peter, he might not have gotten it in his packet.
No.
Came late.
So we're showing hydrangea along the property line on the Millbank side and then showing...
And that's at what elevation? Is that the street elevation?
Yes. That, that would be right at the street elevation.
Okay.
And then behind that, I believe it's a boxwood, that's being proposed, a ornamental tree at the corner and another ornamental tree at the other corner. And then larger shrubs on either side of the French doors in the front.
I don't see where the walls are. I don't get, I don't, I can't tell where the walls are on here.
There's a wall on the property line and then there's a wall just on the other side of the hydrangeas.
I see it, so, and the walls are how high? Like three each? Are they like three feet each?
Let's see. The wall on the, on the street is two and a half feet and the second wall is also two and a half feet.
So does that mean the hydrangeas are two and a half feet above the, yeah, so the hydrangeas are two and a half feet?
Above the sidewalk.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Right, goes from elevation 111.5 to 114. And then the wall behind it is, bottom of the wall is 114.5 to 117. And then our patio is 117.5 and then at the building, it's, it's 118.
So, you know, even if you put a porch on it or even if you change the elevation, I mean, the, yes, the facade, I'm not sure you'd notice it very much given the, the amount of planting you put there and the walls and the landscaping.
Well, that, that's always sort of the quandary. If you put all the screening in, why focus on what it looks like if you can't see it?
Well, because you see it some of the time because the hydrangeas are deciduous and...
Well, the hydrangea are not the ones that are going to provide the screening, be the boxwoods top of that, yeah.
And we get comments about these buildings. I mean, I forget the last time that we were in a setting where we got neighborhood comments. This, this Millbank issue has come up repeatedly, this kind of sideways with an inadequate street facing. It makes people uncomfortable. I'm no architect, but I'm going where Nick is going then.
One of the, one of the classical ways of dealing with this kind of issue is, is you create focal points and axes that create vistas and views and, and if a, if a facade is maybe the side of a building, there's no particular focus to it.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
There's a symmetry and that's all. But maybe if there's a focus to it so that, like, often what buildings would have is they'd have a little alcove carved out where they put a statuary in the center of it on the side to create that kind of focus and that attention to it, which helps kind of soften the kind of symmetry of it in that it's, it's, that kind of symmetry on the side of a building is kind of amorphous.
Yeah.
And that's, so some, you can do, maybe there's an element like that that could be introduced to create that kind of focal point such as, like, a porch is a welcoming idea about entry and steps and, and what have you. But here, maybe you need to introduce some kind of centralized element that focuses, whether it could be maybe even plantings that are, instead of it kind of creating a, a wall, maybe there's more of a focus to what's going on that designates the, your, that idea that this is where the house is and this is, you know, the front yard kind of thing. So whether it's done architecturally or through landscape or some kind of combination, there is certainly plenty of architectural elements that could enhance that idea.
Mm-hmm. We, we have a very capable architect working on this and he's here and listening to your comments and will try to incorporate them into the revised plan.
There are, on your plan, three major trees that, two are along the, the north property line and one at the front. They're not showing up on the landscape plan nor are they showing up but being removed. My concern, particularly the one on the neighbors' property, the 20-inch tree that's kind of halfway back and you're digging a foundation five feet next to it, did you have any conversation about protecting those trees?
I'm picking up two, one...
One in the front.
In the front.
There's a 20-inch.
And then there's a 20-inch over here.
There's two 20-inches on this property.
Oh, that one right there.
Yeah.
Well, we'll take a look at it and see.
And they should show up on the landscape plan. And my concern is, I don't know how you're going to keep them.
We'll, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, and this is just a detail on the landscaping. I didn't know what a white fringed tree was, so I looked it up. It says they grow from New Jersey south. USDA doesn't list them as Connecticut.
Well, that, that's, that's part of global warming, so we're now sort of in New Jersey corporate area.
I bring you last winter.
Okay, any comments from the public?
All right, if we could leave this open, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll provide an explanation.
Thank you. Okay, we're down, last item, 17 Meadowcroft Lane.
Do you have any guidance on the streetscape?
Final site plan and special permit.
Because I...
Meadowcroft Lane, who is?
Wake up. Go. All right, so this is open, so we're done. Katie, I'm not sure we're going to vote, 599, but their waiting should be.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Larry Liebman representing the applicant. Before you is a modification to a site plan special permit that you all granted back in 2014. The additions include, I can, we, they're listed in the staff report. It's a 618-square-foot change. The recommend, the recommendations that are listed, we will rectify the zoning location survey to meet the site plan and the revised... meet the site plan and the revised site plan. The zoning enforcement officers' comments, we have double-checked the floor area and it does increase, it's seventy-five square feet and it's, everything still falls within the permitted, falls within the permitted areas. The walls and the columns of the driveway entrance should comply with section six dash one forty. We have no objection to, obviously it has to comply with, for us to get the certificate of occupancy. The project has received approval in two thousand and twelve from the Illinois Water Forces Commission. It has been reviewed, these revisions have been reviewed by staff and they see no reason to move it forward again or to bring it to the agency again. They don't have any issues with it. The zoning board of appeals granted a special, a special exception for the court downstairs or the recreation facility downstairs and you all have received-
You have to, I think your mic just went. Good, because I'm not sure she's capturing all that anyway.
What's the problem?
The mic just went.
Of course it did. Of course it did. Is this better now? Thank you, yeah. Okay. So, we, the architects from, architects from Paul Marchese is officer here. If there's any questions, since most of the issues, most of the issues are architectural issues or most of the, all of the changes are architectural issues.
All right. Comments? Anybody? Anybody?
I'm sorry.
You have comments?
Yeah, I just missed, missed, I had a time lapse here. The Z E O comments, when you were, you went through that. Okay. Sorry. I just had a-
Okay.
Okay. Any comments? Anything from the public? Okay, we'll close. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, folks. Shall we start? Do you want to start with five ninety-nine, guys?
Look at it this way. If you ended with five ninety-nine, I could go home.
Well, actually, it may be, I'm not, I don't think I want to, I'm ready to do the resolution right now. Yeah. I think that we talked enough about different pieces and how we, I just want to mull it a tiny bit.
You want to think about it.
I'd like to do it at the next meeting, if that's all right with everybody, so we don't let too much, I don't want to let a lot of time go, but I just want to make sure that in my mind, what we're asking for, and how can we do that so we get everybody's thoughts together? We just make sure we talk enough about it. We talk enough about it at the next meeting that we're-
Right. I mean, at the, at the next meeting, it's, it will be listed in the decision items of the agenda.
And then everybody-
You just take it up and you start your discussion at that time within the public meeting.
I happen to be, feel that way as well.
Good.
How do you guys feel?
I think Peter noted it then.
I, yeah. I, I think that's a fine idea to let it sit.
Yeah.
If you're not ready because I could go either way, but I'm very happy just letting it sit.
There was just enough intensity to the discussion.
And, you know, I was talking to Donald too and we were thinking that there's no rush, so.
Just, okay.
No reason to rush into this.
Okay. I, I just need a little time.
I mean, I'm, I'm willing to do that. I'd like to get this thing finished, but two weeks is not a long time and everybody has to be comfortable, so.
Okay.
It isn't that I don't know, it's just I want to make sure we've sorted everything.
Sure. Who else? Anybody else? How do you feel?
I could go either way.
What?
I could go either way, but since there's, people want to wait, I can wait.
Okay. So, we hold, so we, we're closed, but we hold decision.
Yep.
Okay. Was that fast enough for you?
I guess.
Okay. Next item is the Moreland.
Moreland. Hold on, hold on.
Moreland Road.
Yep. Hold on. I got to get to the bottom down here. Okay, why can't I find it?
Yes, it was-
Any comments on Moreland Road?
Hold on just a second.
Not seated on it, Nancy's sitting for me on it.
Maybe I made the notes.
He's got comments.
Nope, I did not. Okay. Yeah, I'm ready. Okay.
You have comments? Go ahead.
Yeah. No, no, I'm ready to move forward on the final, to move that we approve the final site plan and special permit. As I, as my notes indicate, I think we need to give some recognition that the applicant really did a lot to change the plans to reflect our input, to accommodate our input and that, you know, we're, we are pleased with, we're happy with those improvements. Really, the only things we had left open were the maintenance plan for the meadow that was asked that it be submitted. The Z E O was to confirm the great plain and F A R and the green area. And we were going to ask that the tree protection measures be provided to staff. I believe those are the only open items.
And they clarify their landscape proposal.
Oh, to clarify the landscape protect, the protection of the trees. Andy, what, it was-
In the shaded area to each side, which includes-
You're on, so they can hear you.
Retaining the old stone wall. All, all of the features of that landscape.
Well, we said that part, that the changes that they've made and then they'll list them, you know, we were very pleased that they're retaining the stone wall and that they're dry setting it so that the natural little, the little animals can go in.
Okay.
And then the clarification between the landscape plan and the-
Just to clarify, they're not removing any of the mature trees in those areas indicated in the left and right of the plane.
Okay. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We needed a sec, Andy seconded it.
One fifty-one Greenwich, you have a note?
Didn't hear him.
I'm just contemplating something.
Oh.
Do we have one fifty-one?
One fifty-one, Richard's going to do it.
I move the approval of the, since it is still before, it says a final site plan and special permit with the observation that the retail use was a permitted use when the building was built and the revision from the retail use, which in the past had been a hair salon at one time, to its proposed new use of a, of a, what do you call, blowing station? That's, that can't be right.
Personal service.
Huh?
Personal service.
Oh, okay. Which is, and operated and many of her customers are with the salon already in the building. I don't think that that use is in any way more detrimental to the neighborhood than, than the existing uses. And lastly, they wish to create a division of one of the two retail spaces into two and I don't think that that creates any problems and therefore I would move approval and any outstanding staff or other departmental comments.
Okay.
Second. Hold on just a sec. I think that just so that it's established for the record that in the letter, we should include the stated hours and days of operation, that not full, not all year, but that at certain times of year, they may be open seven days a week and that the hours are roughly nine to six P. M.
So, and then, and just, just for clarification, so is, it's just a straight finding that there's, that the retail to personal service is not more detrimental as opposed to any of the conversations he was having about the use issue? Is that, is that fair?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we don't, we don't-
He didn't remove the special permit and he didn't remove-
So, it's, he's approving both the site plan and he's approving the special permit as well.
So, you would be a straight finding-
Yes.
Based on retail to personal service.
Within, within the use.
Careful, well, with an acknowledgement-
The other spaces for retail is that-
That a prior use had been a personal service use.
Right.
And the, and the other space that you separated out is for retail specifically.
But Margarita, I'm not sure it's a good idea to put hours and what have you there because there's no way you can check it.
No, no, but it's, you know what I wanted to do it for? Ten years from now, somebody complains and says, you know, they're open seven days a week and they probably aren't allowed to do that, but it'll be documented that we knew and we allowed it. So, it'll be somewhere that they, they told us.
I think we should, they should give it to us in writing.
What'd you say?
Give it to us in writing.
Because it is a non-conforming use, it's a good idea to be clear as to what the previous are.
Yeah.
Only because of that.
Okay. All right.
Yes, so let's just make sure we document it because if there's a problem with the use-
Who's the second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right. Okay, now, three thirty railroad.
Nick seconded it? Okay. Hold on, I got to figure this out. We did that one and now we're doing-
Three thirty.
Okay. Now, Richard, you're back on.
Yeah. A little discussion first before we do this. The, when you read this, the section seventeen-
Point two.
Point two.
A.
A. There's a curious wording there that I'd like to clarify. It almost seems like they have to submit two site plans. You with me, Katie? Because they talk about then the site plan being amended. So, it's almost as if we've got to get an overall site plan showing the yards and everything on it and the two uses as a site plan that we're going to approve and then it has to be an amended site plan that gets approved, that they're going to be then in two separate ownerships. That's, the only way I can read this and if I'm reading it wrong, I, it's-
Another amended, what do you mean, an amended?
It says, where the planning and zoning commission has granted site plan approval or special permit approval for a mixed-use development. Okay? So, we want to do that. And then it says, where an owner wishes to create separate condominium, then a, then a division of the approved tract into two parcels for the purposes of sale or building, it may be committed, permitted by the commission after the filing of an amended site plan and the certified map to be filed with the town clerk's office. Now, that's what I didn't understand, so I'm, so I wanted to have a discussion before we make a motion.
Well, isn't it stating that essentially you have a site plan on it right now and that it's one lot and that it's got the uses on it?
But is-
And then they're filing an amend, I mean, is it just saying that, hey, here's an amended or new site plan that we're asking to be-
All right, so already there's a site plan on the record showing, it's almost like the existing site plan.
Right, existing site plan. And then they're providing what they call amended.
So, what they're providing us today is an amended site plan to that?
That's kind of how I would read it. And then one does get filed in the land records.
Okay.
Richard, I have that thought. The existing site plan that we've been seeing actually is for the renovation of that, the building, their parking, but it never really covered any of the-
Automobile deal or any resource, equipment or any part of that. Would that be included in the site plan? To understand what use or what's going on in that portion of the property.
Well, I think the use that's going on in that portion of the property, the existing use, they're proposing no new use. Yeah. So-
I'm not going in there to survey it.
Why not? So, are we okay if we, if we move this to be the amended site plan or is, how does that, I'm still not clear on that.
I think that's getting too complicated. I think, I think it's just you're approving the site plan as much as-
All right.
Because I think those, I think those are talking about procedural issues and I think, I think when you file, you know, it's like we talk about filing the certified map on the land.
Hallelujah.
You know, I think, I think, you know, you're just approving the site plan and all the procedures get followed from there in terms of the-
Okay. Okay.
But that whole paragraph should be reviewed per answer.
The, the Z E O has commented on the required yards as shown in the plan and he is, he is okay with that. A R C has approved the planting and lighting for the building. H D C has indicated their approval of the building as, as presented to us. They, they do need to resolve the traffic issue, so this is a condition, they need to resolve that one-way, two-way flow with the traffic with D P W.
Satisfaction with satisfaction.
Right. Yeah. And whichever way they conclude is fine.
Right.
And then the sewer is to be excavated and, and then a determination made where a lighting fixture may need to be relocated and that would be okay.
And you said the lighting, right?
Yeah.
Did you say the lighting?
Yeah, before the sewer.
Yeah, yeah.
And all the cross easements, et cetera.
All of those cross, yes, have to be done. And I just want to make sure that we put in the thing that H D C is, is, is okay with the facade easement on the building.
Do you want the law department to review that language?
Yes, we always say that. It's shorthand.
What about providing proof of the filings?
Just a second, I need to say, the one last, the other thing is that, that the employees will be limited per section six one hundred point one to be a multiple of the parking spaces and that's it, other than any other departmental or-
You did the lighting.
Yeah, it's got to go back to A R C for-
Got to go back to A R C for the solar array and the lighting.
And the lighting.
And-
Well, I thought they've, they already approved the lighting.
No, they-
It's just, this one light fixture is-
No, I have-
I think that they had looked at the lighting, but they, the, the Lumen's plan certainly doesn't comply, so I think that, you know.
Okay, then just say that the Lumen's-
They're going to deal with the Lumen's plan so that it matches and-
No, just say that's a condition that the Lumen plan shall comply.
It says it doesn't meet six one fifty-two.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, last item.
Okay, um, hold on, hold on, hold on. Don't go too fast because what, um, somebody down there, Peter seconded it. And you got the solar array. I'm just making sure we got all the pieces. Um, did we have to make a one forty-one finding on this one?
No.
Last, last item is the seventeen Meadowcroft.
We did the minutes.
We did the minutes before.
We did the minutes.
On the A R C count.
We did, we did all these, all this stuff.
No, we didn't do that. We've got one more project to do.
Meadowcroft.
I would move the approval of the final site plan and special permit for this project to include any outstanding staff or departmental comments.
Second.
Very good.
Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
That was kind of a squirmy vote.